She's in the parking lot.
Oh, Mr. Cole. This is where we need to turn five. Hey, Kevin. Is she trying to give him that way? I know.
All right, let's get started on this community benefits package, E-Group PS solar. Solar project update and workshop on the community benefits package. I had to recuse myself through the potential property lines of where I live in the project. So it's all yours, Mr. Mayor Protem. Okay, here we go. So this is just a workshop, so Cindy, they just take over?
Yes, but I guess they wanted to. We're not supposed, but they suggested that we do it, so.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilwoman Ramirez, here. Councilmember Wright has an excused absence. Mayor Bill Derrane has a conflict of interest possibly, so he recused himself. Mayor Protem Mince.
I am here. Okay, all right, so, yes, that's you?
All right, thank you, councilmen. What we're looking at here is the E-Group solar project. Before we get to the meat of the bone on the community benefit package, just very, very quickly, this is the background on it. Currently, the city has ban, has a ban on solar fields. However, state law allows for solar farms that meet certain criteria to be reviewed and conditioned by the state instead of local jurisdictions. In May of 2023, the city council directed city staff to process the solar field application proposed by E-Group Solar and to negotiate a community benefit package. Very quickly, the project is located generally on the northwest side of town. It's about 477 acres and the solar development is on the northern half of that. Here's a blow up of the site. We are north of Two Mile Road, east of Canyon, west of Knowles Noel Road, south of City Limits and, or Amboy Road, okay? The project components, there's a lot of them, which I'm not going to get into detail at the moment, but we have two general plan amendments, two rezonings, a development code amendment, a commercial use permit, and a development agreement, and of course, environmental impact report. Very briefly, here is the site plan, if the city council would like to discuss this a little bit, but here we have 160,000 plus or minus solar panels. And they would be wired to the existing substation on Two Mile Road. The environmental impact report is still being produced and we are internally reviewing it right now, so we have no definitive date as to when that would be released for public review or when the public hearings before the planning commission would begin. The purpose of the community benefit package is so that way the city gets some benefit out of this project. A typical development project, whether it be commercial or industrial or residential, would be required to dedicate certain infrastructure improvements and to pay a certain amount of development impact fees. However, since this is a solar project, it will generate none of those, so we do a different path through a community benefit package. It should be noted that if it goes through the state, the state would negotiate its own community benefit package, whether or not the city is included or not, we don't know. So here's the meat of the bone. As soon as the project begins construction, they would be paying $105,000. And then, once they begin operation for three years, they pay the city $120,000 until the fifth year up to 100, goes, it moves up to 135,000. And then, $150,000 after, after year five with an annual CPI increase. We are seeking direction from the city council. Is this approach of the community benefit package satisfactory to the city council? Is the city council comfortable with the amounts negotiated thus far? And as of right now, we are not earmarking any particular projects as to where these monies would go to, but is that, is the city council desirous to earmark funds generated by the solar project or the city council prefer to have the flexibility to allocate funds in the future once they are received? So that is my presentation. We do have legal here to say a few other words.
Good evening, members of the council, the, probably the. I think it's on, there we go.
There you go.
I just got to get closer. One of the things you have to bear in mind this evening is that this is just a workshop for us to get input from the council on these issues. There are a couple of items that will ultimately have to be approved that require public hearings, so this isn't a time to take action. And it's important that, you know, we don't have you expressing definitive positions on the project this evening, that has to be reserved until we have a full public hearing, fully noticed hearing, so everybody has a chance to be heard and get their due process rights as part of that process. It is an opportunity for, for the council to give input to staff, in particular on the negotiations that we've been involved in. Kind of need a little direction, make sure we're on the right path and make sure that this is going in the direction you want to see for when it does come back for your ultimate approval.
Thank you. Just a little bit of a history, when we banned the solar fields in the city, at the time, the state had no regulations to override city jurisdictions. Obviously, when you, they go to solar fields, they, we lose the property value, we lose property tax value, and we got nothing in return at the time, so thus we banned it. But then now the state has turned around and passed laws to override, they've been trying to do it for the last 10 years, override almost all local jurisdictions. So that's kind of the history of, of where it's at, we're not, it's with the solar field. It's because the state, where the state's trying to override us on different things, so that's kind of why it was like that, so. Other than that, so, do we want to hear from the applicant, is that what we'll start with? Sure, okay, come on up.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm Robert Smith, representing E-Group PS here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to be back before you and be able to present once again on the project. As, as staff mentioned, you know, this is the first of multiple hearings that we will have hopefully later this year to talk about the substance of the project, but we're very excited to be in front of you tonight to actually talk about the community benefits package. As we've said at every single time that we've been in before the city council and with the public, it is our hope that this is a project that both the council and the community can feel good and, and is a positive contribution to the community in the long run and that the public benefits outweigh the disadvantages that the community may feel about the installation of solar panels within city limits. In terms of the community benefits package, we support staff's proposal. It's not where we started. We've been in negotiations with staff, including the city attorney, for almost a year now, going through various numbers. We can support that staff proposal and still make the project finance. There are some pressures happening with solar developments right now at the federal level, you know, with certain taxes that may or may not be exist, existence, and so we're trying to do the best we can to make this a benefit to the community while making sure that we can actually still build it with some of those uncertainties that are happening right now in Congress. And so tonight, you know, we don't want to take up too much of your time talking about the project from our end. This is our opportunity to hear from you and hear from the public in terms of what the community and what you think would be good for a public benefits package. And with that, we're all ears. We're also here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I guess, well, council, do you have any questions at this time, or do you want me to go to public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, sir. I really appreciate you working with staff and staff working with you to, to make sure this is a project that is going to be a benefit to the community. I think, I guess I have questions around how did we, how did we come up with these numbers?
I could say it from staff's proposal, well, let me print this by, and staff could certainly answer this because they're, they've done some independent research and work on their own. When we started this, we went to neighboring jurisdictions and we said, okay, well, what are your sister cities and counties getting for their solar projects? We wanted to make sure that this was going to beat those, more or less, because there's a lot more work frankly that's going into this. You have a moratorium, that's hopefully going to be overturned. There's a lot of work that goes into that, it's not just the third solar project that may be having San Bernardino County. So in that recognition, we worked with the city to, we provided some data, they did their own independent research through a, a third-party consultant to sort of see what your neighboring jurisdictions were getting in return, and then I think we could say we beat all those numbers. So we started there, well, and we, in fact, the first proposal that we, that we presented would have beaten those to begin with. And then there was some further negotiations with staff where, you know, they asked for a little bit more and we're wanting to give a little bit more, and that's sort of how we arrived at the numbers that we have today.
Thank you very much, sir.
Councilmember Scott, I could perhaps add on to that, that we retained a third-party consultant, Cosmot, which is a pretty, you know, well-known consultant that goes out and does economic evaluations. And the numbers they came back with in terms of what other jurisdictions are able to, you know, achieve when these kinds of negotiations were pretty consistent with where we're at here, it's a little higher than where we started in the initial offer, so we pushed them up a little bit, and then we added in the CPI inflator as well, just to kind of, you know, it's a long-term agreement, we want to, you know, make sure that we're not going backwards.
Thank you very much, sir. I, I do have a question, I don't know which one, answer, probably you, Patrick. How, what is the process with the state? I mean, is, as far as overriding us, if, do they have, are they one cases already? Have they, have they been successful overriding these in different jurisdictions?
Well, it's not a question of overriding what we do, you know, they don't get to second guess your decision. The, the whole purpose of AB 205, I'm getting my numbers mixed up, is a 205, yeah, AB 205, was for the state to basically go to cities where they knew there was local opposition and to make it impossible for cities to be able to, on their own, say no. So if we were to say no, then the applicant has the ability to go directly to the state. The state gets to process an application, they can completely ignore our zoning code, so our ban basically, it's like it doesn't exist. As Mr. Gardner mentioned, one of the requirements, if they go through the state process, is there has to be a community benefits package, but it's not a, there's no requirement that it comes to the city and we lose any ability to have any control in those negotiations. So, you know, we are sort of picking our poison a little bit, recognizing this is not something that we would have, you know, potentially run out and embraced on the one hand, on the other hand, recognizing that it's something that could happen anyway. We've negotiated the best deal that we've been able to negotiate so far. And then, bear in mind also that tonight, we're just talking about the financial aspects of it. When the actual project application comes before the council and, you know, planning commission, there'll be conditions of approval like there might be with any project, and one of the big issues that we'll be addressing is sort of long-term, when you have a mine, there's, you know, like the granite mine, there's a reclamation plan, and we would have the same thing here, so that, you know, down the road, if for some reason this, you know, was rendered to be kind of infeasible or went out of business early or whatever, we'd have a mechanism to make sure it gets cleaned up, and then when it's at the end of its useful life, we'll make sure we have a mechanism to make sure it's cleaned up so that we're not just left with some, you know, big blight out in the middle of the desert.
Okay, good.
I have one more question, I understand we're, we're looking at the finances here, but I think it's important to, so I think he said if we're overturn, overturning that moratorium, does that mean that there will be potential more solar farms in the city?
The way we're structuring this, I mean, I guess the bottom line answer to your question is yes, but the way we're structuring this is that we're just doing a zone change for just this property. We're not opening it up wide open for anybody who might want to come in and start putting in a solar project. And there's a lot of reasons strategically for doing that, but you know, the primary one is, you know, that this isn't, we're not sending a message that, you know, we're fair game, anybody that wants a project, come here, and, you know, to be honest, we've put them through the wringer a little bit, and so I'm not sure how attractive we will be for other people. And I will say, one of the things that we did early on in this project is we told them that we didn't really like this location and that we thought maybe they should look at some other locations, and this isn't my expertise area, but you know, my sort of layman's understanding of what they came back and told us was that this is sort of the perfect spot in terms of the geographic location, the way the sun hits, the way the, you know, the, the nearness, whatever the right terminology is to other facilities. So I'm not sure that, that we will be a, an attractive location for lots of other solar businesses just because we approved this one.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and open this to the public, and then, on the, I have, on these I have addresses, but I will ask you what city you live in, so. Dwayne, is it Austin? This says 2624 Baghdad Highway, is this 29 Palms? I don't recognize Baghdad. 29 Palms?
Yep.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm in here in favor for the E-Group solar project. I think it's a good thing, solar, way things are going, the efficiency, the carbon emissions, just overall, I know they're not probably the most beautiful things to look at, but they definitely, especially with the, the package, the, the income that's going to generate for the city, I think the city's really need, need that, and I can, I can see places where it's, where it's needed, and if this is something that's going to do that, I, I know the area too, out there in the northwest part of town, I think it's a decent location for it. You know, solar is something that I think is, is going to be expanding regardless of whether you want it to or not, and with the state and their position, it's better to probably approve it and have it go through than have the state come in and, and do what they, they're going to do, and, you know. I just know that the city and, I've been here five years now, I'm from, originally from Newport Beach, and, you know, this is a place with, with a lot of sunshine and a lot of space, and you got a growing population as far as, especially with the tourists coming in, and I think the, the power is needed and, and looking at it as far as an efficient and green source, I think it's the right way to go.
Okay, well, thank you. Keith or Stone, who's doing the timer? One of, okay, one of you need to do that. That's okay, he didn't, he was under three minutes, but Steve. Bardwell? And you just have a P O box, is this 29 Palms?
Hi, this, hello, I'm Steve Bardwell, I'm the president of the Morongo Basin Conservation Association, I live in Pioneer Town. But NBCA has been tracking solar projects throughout the desert for many years, and this project has the potential of creating a lot of problems for this. I encourage, really looking at this very carefully, to, to see what would happen if this project were to be constructed. I would like to people to take a look at what happened in Owens Lake, and the air pollution that was caused there by, by having a bare, in that case, desiccated lake, subject to really strong winds, created a tremendous amount of dust, and it was very, it was a big problem, and that we have very much the same potential to have that happen here. I'm here, I know Pat Flanagan would be here, were she in town, so I'm want, here to speak, speak in her voice and talk about the importance of, of considering the fact that this site is within a sand transport path. And a sand transport corridor basically is an area that has soils and, and wind such that it scoops up sand and dust and casts them downwind. This project being to the north and west of downtown, there's real concern that this would have the potential of creating dust and, and pollution for the entire town, so this really needs to be looked at. Regarding AB 205, one of the issues that has not been mentioned on this is that AB 205 applies to projects of 50 megawatts or more. Given the fact that this is a, a 236 acre project, as what I understand, and solar farms generate in the neighborhood of five to seven micro, megawatts per acre, so if we use the lesser amount of five, that's only 47 megawatts. So this thing is not going to, as it now sits, it would not meet the bar of AB 205 being able to supplant in the, the existing jurisdictions here. If it were to go to the state and for, for its analysis and its permitting, it would still be subject to SEQA analysis, and it would be subject to a very rigorous SEQA analysis, which is appropriate, we don't want to be putting something in here that would be detrimental to the town. The other thing to keep in mind on this is something that people are only now beginning to realize is the important of, the importance of the desert's ecosystem and its plants in terms of sequestering and holding carbon. The, think of the, think of the desert as an inverted rainforest with all of the roots underground during the work to sequester the carbon.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate, we appreciate your comments, thank you. Eric Menendez. Pardon me?
I didn't have one of the.
Oh, oh, I am number nine. He handed that to me, so, oh, okay, so this just on the regular one? These are Steve's problems, not mine. Okay, so you're talking about, that's all for the meeting, okay. These are all for the meeting. Okay, Mary Jane, I'm sorry. So I didn't, I, I didn't look at the thing, are all these for this? Okay. And Mary Jane is 29 Palms.
Yes, good evening. My question is, is this going to be cleaned with water, our water source? It's going to be cleaned with water?
No, it uses robotics, they clean it with.
There you go.
Okay, I guess that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, so that's Mary Jane, okay, David. Fleck, David, and just state your address for us, please.
David Fick, 40-year resident of Joshery, Eastern Joshery, 20-year NBCA board member, and, well, the only one who beats me on NBCA years is Pat Flanagan, who prepared those papers you see there. She's our main person. Now, our president, he, he got it a little wrong on the acreage, the acreage is 184, which lessens the megawatt production of the, the project. And so this project will not even make 40 megawatts under the current solar technologies we have for the next 10 years. And as he said, President Bardwell, as he said, 50 megawatts is the minimum that this project has to have to be able to qualify for the AB 205. So this is a dishonest bluff by E-Group. They are falsely saying that they have the power or energy, or whatever you want to call it, to override you. They don't, they have to deal with you, they cannot deal with the state. You might want to know, I'm, being a 40-year resident of Joshery, I was also head of land use on the JT MAC for seven years, 2006 to 2012. We dealt with several solar considerations. We've also dealt, as NBCA and an offshoot in AHA Group, we dealt with the JT solar project between 2015 and 2017. I'm up on the solar stuff. Now, I know that the Cascade Solar Project, which was approved while I was on the JT MAC, that is 150 acres and that's 22 megawatts. So 184 acres, if you try and expand it, that's prob, they're not even going to make 35 megawatts. So they're way, way under this and it's a bluff, please consider that, they have to deal with you, it's a false bluff that they're doing. I've also been involved in the Crest Projects of 2013, I don't know if anybody here has left, but the Crest Projects were a highly unethical assembly of Crest Projects, which were small. One was in the sphere of influence here in 2013, they tried to bribe or mitigate your town council with 20, $200,000 for a 12-acre project. That was the, that was, all those Crest Projects were defeated. So the problem is, this project, as it is, is 75% of the time, it's upwind of a third of your population, of anything north of the highway and east of their project is a major part of 29 Palms. So that's a major consideration, okay, so winds blow, 75% of the time, the winds blow from west to east. That's about it.
Well, thank you. All right, George, I can never always say his name, Mepapopulus, you'll have to correct me. Baseline 29 Palms.
Hi, my name is George Malopoulos. I am a property owner and homeowner in 29 Palms, and notably, I'm the manager of Proactive Properties, which owns the 476 acres that this 184 acre project is sitting on. So I have a vested interest. I strongly urge the city council to approve the staff-proposed community benefits package for the E-Group solar project. This 184 acre project 50 megawatt installation, and that's the number that I have, is a 50 megawatt project, just north of Two Mile Road, will generate enough clean renewable energy to power roughly 8,000 homes, reinforcing California's transition away from fossil fuels and significantly reducing local greenhouse gas emissions. Uniquely suited, suited for solar development, this site sits adjacent to the Carradine Substation, right across the street, avoiding costly infrastructure upgrades, and its natural topography keeps much of the facility out of sight from street level, preserving our desert charm. By the way, I've had dozens of solar companies contact me about these, these two parcels across the street from the substation over the last 20 years, and they all want to do a solar development. That's all that anyone wants, has wanted to do with that, with the exception of the golf course in 2006. So estimated, no, importantly, the project aligns with community priorities. Revenue generated annually from this project, estimated 105,000 to 150,000 per year, will help fund much-needed local improvements like new roads, a modern animal shelter, and expansion of 29, Theater 29, which directly responds to public demand. By partnering with the city, rather than falling under a state override via AB 205, we maintain local control over project specifics, environmental protections, wildlife corridors, underground cabling, and community benefit agreements. This project delivers construction jobs, ongoing annual municipal revenue, and quality of life enhancements, all while responsibly preserving wildlife and landscapes. 29 Palms has a rare chance to secure its future, embracing renewable growth, meeting public infrastructure needs, and safeguarding our values on our terms. Let's not squander the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, George, obviously, you had another slip here for two other people, Elizabeth and somebody, I, obviously, they both agree with your position, there's no, I'm not going to give you any more time to just repeat what you just said.
No, it's just a real, it's a quickie.
Okay.
Well, you want to say what, hear what they said.
Yeah, just.
This is speaking on behalf of Jeremiah and Elizabeth Schuler, who are homeowners in 29 Palms. As local homeowners, we are in favor of the proposed 184 acre solar project north of Two Mile Road. Working with the city, rather than being. Working with the city, rather than being subjected to state override under AB 205, means local control, construction jobs, annual city revenue, and community benefits. 29 Palms residents and city council should embrace this balanced forward-thinking opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Kurt Kepler, Keptur? Yes, oh, good. No, no, I know, I first thought, you can't speak, Kurt.
Yeah, I'm Kurt Kepler. My wife and I own a house out on Sammer Can, near Beaver Tail, so we're directly adjacent to the proposal, proposed solar facility. And in contradiction to what George said, it would be very visible to us where our home is and the houses around us. We have a home on Sammer Can. In other words, we're at the edge of the solar farm. My wife and I strongly oppose the construction of an industrial-scale solar farm on uneven and rocky terrain on the edge of the Harmony Acres neighborhood. This area, this is an area upwind from the city, posing a threat of erosion and ongoing fugitive dust storms, not only for our neighborhood, but for the city as a whole. Think Valley Fever. This alone should be enough to give responsible parties pause. The truth is that E-Group's threat of circumventing local control using AB 205 sets up a false dichotomy. If the city sticks with its solar moratorium, and that moratorium was put there for a good reason, E-Group would have to undergo an even more rigorous approval process with the state. The approving agency in this case would be the California Energy Commission, and a close reading of their fact sheets reveals that there would be strict environmental reviews by independent agency scientists as opposed to the current developer-funded EIR. In addition, if E-Group goes through the state and are successful, they would still be required to negotiate a benefits package with the city. In other words, if we stick with our moratorium, we would end up with, we could end up with a much better package. $100,000 a year is not, would definitely not be worth the disruption, loss of property values, environmental degradation, dust storms, and the loss of the serene desert atmosphere that inspired so many of us to build houses in this beautiful environment. I encourage all of you to spend a couple hours and drive out to Sammer Can and look at the property. I think if you really look at the site, you'll see how unsuitable it is for a solar project of this magnitude. That's it. That's all I got.
Well, thank you. Since I did let George read, I did, all of us got a letter from Suzanne Lyons. She's a part-time resident, and she has, evidently has a home out in that area, and she just mentioned actually some of the same things that the Rongo Basin Conservation gentlemen spoke about, the president, and just said, wanted us to look at the state's mandates. So anybody else? That's all the slips I have. Anybody else? Oh, okay. Come on up.
Is that Susan?
I believe it's Susan.
Hello, Susan Peplow, East Joshua Tree, although business owner and property owner in 29 Palms. Much of my questions were actually answered by Mr. Munoz, so I really appreciate that the city did take the opportunity to work with a consultant and to try to analyze exactly what this property could be valued with in consideration of other municipalities. Two years ago, when this came up, I had asked that you make it as inhospitable as possible for future or other solar companies to come in. And as Mr. Munoz said, he said that due to its location and stuff, it might already lend itself to that anyways. But that brings up another question, and it does relate to the finances of this, is as we were negotiating and they were looking at other municipalities, does it have the same proximity to a substation that this particular parcel does? Part of the attraction is that there's no easement to cross, and there's no, they don't have to buy other land. And so that makes it very attractive and pencils out on the project. So in turn, we should be seeing, or shouldn't we? That's the question to you, an elevated cost. Because frankly, if you're looking at what, let's call it, whatever it is, the $150,000 a year, give or take, that pays for one week of our sheriff's department contract. So if we want to cover our sheriff's department contract, let's get another 51 solar projects in 29 Palms. So I'm not really, I don't know what your pet projects are. You know, George had a really good one where he said, like, the palms and paws, that works. You know, it's like, we went through strategic planning, but if you look at 100, 150 grand a year, what's it really doing for us? And so that's the question to you, as it relates to the public benefit package, is this dollar amount enough? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else before I bring you back up here? Okay. I do have a question that got brought up for you. Now, he was, Steve was, I mean, he, he was talking about the megawatts. How many megawatts is this producing?
It's 50.
It is 50.
Yeah, and we don't have our whole team here tonight because, you know, this is about the community benefits package, rather than sort of the environmental impacts or the technical specifications.
Right. We can't talk about that anyway. I just, that was the only question.
Right, but it's 50. I mean, there's, in order to make this pencil, we need to have megawatts to sell, and we need to make certain representations to, not to get too much into the weeds, to the taker of that, that we are going to guarantee a certain amount of megawatts, and that's what we've guaranteed. So if we can't do that, then we've got bigger problems on our hands than representing to you all what the megawattage is for the project. It is a little bit ironic because, I mean, if we wanted to go to the state, which again we don't want to do, but we could also just make it a 50-watt project, megawatt project when we went to the state. But again, we're not, we're not going to do that. We're here and before you, but it's 50 megawatts.
Okay. And obviously, some of the other concerns they had, that's, that would be brought up during mitigation at the planning commission first. We can't discuss that tonight, so thank you.
Yeah. I do have some questions regarding the finances of the project. I know that Mr. Keith Gardner had mentioned that, you know, none of these monies are going to be earmarked for any specific project. But just hearing some of the residents in the community right now, especially residents that live in this area and in the area, the vicinity of this project, I'm wondering if we can create some type of community zone around that project where we earmark a certain percentage of this money to only be used in that neighborhood? Yes, sir?
These are, in essence, general fund monies, and you can earmark them however you like. You can earmark them in advance, if that's your desire. You could earmark them after the fact. There will be recurring funds, and so, you know, I mean, really, the world's your oyster, so to speak. You can do whatever you want. You could say, okay, we want to make sure the first couple of years go to X, and the next couple of years go to Y, or percentages, but really, you can do what you want, and you'll have the flexibility down the road if your priorities change to, to change the way those funds are earmarked, because these are not funds that are restricted to certain uses.
Thank you, because I think that'd be a cool little idea, maybe doing a little bit of infrastructure improvements around that area to kind of offset some of the concerns that residents might have.
Well, yeah, in that, that's where, I mean, obviously, we have to give staff direction. We don't have to earmark them tonight, because we don't know what's, if this project isn't going to, if we're not starting to get checks till three years from now, we might have different priorities. So we just, really, we just got to give them direction, I think, on these three, unless we have any more questions on, if we're okay, so...
Questions? As far as the finances go, is this set in stone? Is there other benefits that you guys could offer to the community? What other benefits aside from this money would, how else could the community benefit? Is what I'm asking.
Well, right now, we've been working with staff on basically a fund that could be used, as, you know, Keith and Patrick just said, to be utilized by the community and through the city council, however you may see fit. The one part that we didn't talk about tonight, which is in the package, is also dedicating the extension of roads through the project site, because you don't have that territory currently, and that would be done at no cost to the city. But that's sort of the purpose of tonight, is that we don't presume that we know what's best for this community, but we're here to listen to you and to the community to understand how, you know, if there are other things that would be beneficial. Now, I will say that the package that's before you, in terms of overall monetary value, is fairly close to what we could do to make it pencil. But there are some things that we could put in around the edges that certainly, you know, we'd be happy to consider, as long as they aren't really a humongous adjustment to that bottom line. Because, and just to remind you of sort of what developers, specifically right now are going through in the solar industry, you know, right now, all those other developers that have been developing other communities got the benefit, not to get too far in the weeds, of very significant tax credits, which right now, as of today, may not be there in a month if Congress approves the budget as is currently proposed. And that just, that's nothing to do with you or us, it's just the bottom line, and that's money that, those tax credits go towards the construction for solar projects. And so that takes a little bit out of what we can do. We're also in discussions with U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife in terms of mitigating for desert tortoises on the site, because there were two desert tortoises identified. We, after discussing with that for like the last couple of months, we penciled that as about a million dollars of mitigation that's going to be required by those two agencies. That's another part of that, that not every single solar project has to deal with. And as well as, we need to negotiate a PPA agreement, so we have to sell this energy to somebody. We don't have that agreement yet, so it's very hard for us to say, this is the exact dollar amount that we'll be able to provide because of those unknowns. And so this is the package that we feel comfortable with, but that there are other things that you as council members or the community thinks are valuable contributions. Like, I know there's been some of those things that we've discussed individually with certain council members. We're all ears, and we'd be happy to, to think about those and potentially include those in the development agreement, community benefits package that will come back before your consideration, hopefully later this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. And what he's talking about, just as, just so long as you know, the things he's talking about, the council people, is putting solar on city buildings, not anything crazy, which is, that's the other things they were talking about, putting solar on city buildings that would save taxpayers money, obviously, because then we pay less in SAE charges, so just trying to be very transparent. Okay, so I guess for us three up here...
Can I just, one more thing? I was looking through my notes to find this response to a question from earlier. When this started, the original proposal before we brought in our consultant and started twisting arms harder, was $70,000 a year, so pretty significant sort of change of position that we were able to negotiate out of this between Mr. Gardner's efforts and mine, wherever that's where.
Definitely appreciate it.
Okay. Well, so I'm comfortable with these, with these numbers. Obviously, I have no desire tonight to even try to earmark these, that when we start getting the money, then we can start doing that, but I'm comfortable with the numbers, because staff obviously has, did their homework, and they did their diligence on this, and they got us significantly more than some other communities, so... Now, again, community, this doesn't mean this whole thing is done. This is just what, the first phase of us agreeing to this. They have a lot more to go. This is, has not, this, this is not tonight, like I say, we're not approving this project. Just want to be perfectly clear. This is just us telling staff, the items that they agreed are, they negotiated, is okay with us to start with. So are we okay with that? I think it just needs a head nod on this one. You good? Okay. Okay, staff, you have your direction. And thank you all for being here early today. Like I say, we're, this is just the start. Thank you.[1461.61]
I'm sitting here waiting for Mac in my mind like he's not here yet. Are they ready back there? We're like watching ourselves. Don't don't lock your knees. Don't lock your knees. Don't you pass it out? Are you ready? Are they are they ready back there? Okay, calls be in order. Ms. Barry Jamie, would you lead us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wish standing, our invocation by Pastor John James from the Sanctuary Church.
Hallelujah, let us pray. Most gracious and eternal Father, we thank you for this day, a day that's been filled with provision and the peace of God's presence. For your many blessings and your protection that has kept us on this day, Father, we say thank you. On this evening, Father, we thank you for the mayor, the city council, and the cities officials that have collectively collaborated in the leading of our city. Father God, we also thank you for the citizens that are gathered here on this evening, to include our Macacacy neighbors that make up the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. Father, your word tells us in Philippians four, six through seven, to be anxious for nothing, but in everything by prayer and supplication. With thanksgiving, let our requests be made known to you. And the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, will guard our hearts and minds through Christ Jesus. Father God, on this evening, we pray for the city councils and the decisions to be made on behalf of our city. Father, let every decision be made concerning our city's budgets, development projects, governing processes, maintenance needs, and the overall health and safety of our community be approached with balance, wisdom, and foresight. Father, we pray that the council be both compassionate and considerate of the concerns and needs of the people. Father God, help them to be sensitive to your spirit as you guide them with wisdom and order their steps in the direction that you would have them to go. Father, we ask that you direct them in conflicting and in in the in the conflicting and difficult decisions needed to be made for the betterment of our city. Father God, we also pray for every citizen that is represented here on this evening, as well as those who will stand up and speak, Father God, that each and every individual will express themselves in a respectful and a productive manner, Father God, that does not divert us away from the issues to be addressed, but rightfully and responsibly, Father God, as we all have the opportunity, Father God, to share our personal perspective of the matters at hand. On this evening, Father God, we also pray that our yeses will be yes and our nos will be no, Father God, as we conduct ourselves with both honesty and integrity before yourself and all man. Now, Father God, we ask that you have your way in this place, Father God, not our will, but may your will be done on this evening. And it's in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Wright has an excused absence. Mayor Pro Tem Mintz.
Here.
Mayor Bildring.
Here.
There are no closed session announcements changed to the agenda. We will be changing, correct, Mr. City Manager, for transportation purposes for?
Yes, sir.
City attorney, okay.
So the request is to move the consent calendar up to following announcements.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, announcements, these proceedings may be viewed on demand by the city Twenty-Nine Palms website, www twenty nine palms.org. May also be live streamed this meeting by going on the website and clicking meeting agenda's link. Want to do it now? Consent counter now?
You bet.
All right. Consent counter, all matters listed under the consent counter are to be considered routine by the city council. City council in its capacity as successor agency to the former Twenty-Nine Palms redevelopment agency and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent counter and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on consent counter items prior to the city council action council. Anything? No. Public, we have number six, Eric Menendez.
Eric Menendez, Joshua Tree Gateway Communities Alliance. I just wanted to commend, you know, sitting, learning all the stuff I've learned over the past few years, learning how organ your government is structured and so forth. I think the programs put on at the senior center by Robin, as you know, when we had the flood, which is almost a year ago today, almost, we saw what a great program she has there and I think she works so hard. I think one of the things I pointed out is, you know, we got to look at these nonprofits and how much resources they get. You know, we just sat through this morning, the homeless steering committee with a few of us here up there. And, you know, we know they don't have an unlimited budget. So I think it's great that the city, you know, obviously, the city needs to recoup their costs. And I think it's a totally reasonable, reasonable, what do you call it, increase of the lease. So I just think we need to also make sure we're supporting the programs that benefit our seniors, our unhoused, our vulnerable people. I live on Old Dale, well, until the end of the month here, I'm right across from the water district. And there are five, you know, there's the old bungalows, the split bungalows. And I think you guys, if you've ever grown over driven over there, sorry, I can't see you. There's like all these abandoned, like they look like the roofs are falling off, there's spray paint on them. You know, I would really love to walk them with our community development director or someone because that's five housing units that I've lived there for seven years almost and they look the same. The person that owns the that whole block, he is actually an emergency room physician in L.A. I think he's retired and it's kind of like a, you know, a slumlord. And after spending the last six years with Desert Beacon, doing the property inspections, working closely with Shelley, code enforcement and so forth, it's like we spent so much time on on that process, but yet, you know, rental units in town, you know, put seniors in these homes that have no heat, have have a lot of issues. Like one of the things I was talking to code enforcement about my property is they put these fences up, so I don't even have access to my utility meters. And that's a code violation, you know. So it would be nice if we could get someone to look at, you know, regulation for, you know, having access, you know, stuff like that. Because that's 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 a fire life safety issue. So anyways, that's all I got to say, thank you so much.
Thank you. No one else back up here?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second. Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright, excused absence. Mayor Pro Tem Mintz.
Aye.
Mayor Bildring.
Aye.
Approved four zero one.
Right, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Presentation by Robin Schuster on the Reach Out Marango Basin and the services they provide.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, and community members. I hope this works because I have never done a PowerPoint presentation before, so bear with me. Reach Out Marango Basin has been in the community of Twenty-Nine Palms since nineteen ninety-eight. We've been providing continuous services here for twenty-six years now. And this is our, what we call our home. In twenty twenty-four, we provided services to one thousand twenty-six clients with homemaker, chore, transportation assistance, family caregiving services, and aging in place services. These included respite services at the senior center with out-of-home daycare, where we would bring in recipients to spend the day with us in a supportive environment while the caregiver could get some respite. We provided free transportation to doctor's appointments locally and out of the area. We also did homemaker services, helping with business assistance, filling out paperwork, doing whatever is needed to be done. And then, of course, the aging in place program where we do wheelchair ramps, grab bars, lifting recliners or roller or little mobility scooters, different things that the people could use to help them age in place safely. The senior center is the only, our our main thing I wanted to talk about though today is the senior center. Because that is where our partnership with the city of Twenty-Nine Palms truly shines. With our partnership, we are the only senior center in the Marango Basin that is open seven day or five days a week, full time. We opened for two hundred and fifty-seven days in twenty twenty-four and we host an average of fifty to seventy people per day. Now, these numbers don't are not included in the thousand and twenty-six people that we serve because those are our separate services. These are strictly for the senior center. We assisted approximately four thousand two hundred and fifty people with walk-ins and call services. They would come in and request information about either our services, city services, reaching reaching out for information on the community where so we would give referrals to the food pantries, to other emergency services or any other place that they would need help, utility assistance, rental assistance, and programs like that. We operate as a regional cooling center. We organize, as was spoken of earlier, the lack center that we did last year during emergency services because we also open for emergency services. We hold barbecues, parties, Halloween parties, Fourth of July barbecues, Memorial Day barbecues for our seniors. We take them on outings to the theater for Theater Two Nine. They did Sound of Music, Jesus Christ Superstar. We took them on an outing one time to the Ground Squirrel for lunch. That was a lot of fun. We had fifty seniors in the Ground Squirrel, having burgers and whatever they liked. And it was a wonderful way for them to get out and and socialize. We do a big collaboration with the Twenty-Nine Palms Community Food Pantry and Find Food Bank. We do every month, two hundred and forty boxes of commodities with fresh produce and blocks of cheese that are distributed to seniors right here in the community. We also deliver ninety of those boxes to shut-in seniors from Twenty-Nine Palms up to Indian Cove, Desert Heights, and Wonder Valley areas. That they, if they don't have capacity to come to the senior center for the distribution, we have four vehicles that will go out and deliver to them every single month. And we've been doing that for two and a half years. We oversee and help the services of the Senior Nutrition Program Family Service Association. We have staff that will go in and help in the kitchen. All of Reach Out staff have our food handler certified, so we would go in and supplement their staffing and volunteer in service. And we have also stepped in when they did not have enough staffing to man our site. Reach Out Marango Basin has gone in, prepared the menus, and cooked and served to make sure that our seniors are fed nutritious meals. We can coordinate health seminars, educational seminars, and so many other things. And above it all, we are there day in and day out. We want to be supportive and we want to show that we care. Because we are fully staffed by our organization, we handle all the medical emergencies. We do conflict resolution. We provide a listening ear and anything else that our seniors need when they come in the door. And we we provide this every day in and out in as our partnership with the city or the town. Yeah, the city, I'm sorry. We work hard to make the center a very welcoming place for our seniors. We want them to feel like this is a home away from home and a good place for them to age and to be active in the community. And, you know, we want to make sure that we shine and that with the city, we're able to help provide these services and continue going on. Thank you for letting me talk.
You're welcome. Thank you, favorite that you're doing.
Any questions? Okay, and you guys got pictures for a change, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
I just had a statement.
Oh, go ahead.
Comment, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much, Robin, for everything that you do. I had the privilege of going to the shower event this past week, I think it was. And your staff did an amazing job there, so I really appreciate it.
And for the record, do not go there and try to play pool. You will get ran out of the building. Yeah. They 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 sent me home. I'm glad we weren't betting money, I would have lost a lot of money. There there sharks over there. Yeah. So number three, presentation by Jesse Abarv with the NPHS on the service they provide.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mayor Pro Tem. This evening's presentation is going to be from NPHS. And this is courtesy to really the direction that council has provided in terms of wanting to focus on additional supportive housing options. And specifically, Councilman April Ramirez and her work in that space. And so, given the distance and their location over in the city of Orange, we are hopefully going to be able to pull off a Zoom meeting or really Teams meeting here. And so hopefully, they're going to, perfect. And there is Mr. Jesse. Mr. Jesse, the floor is yours. Is is Jesse muted? So it's on Microsoft Teams, so it's on the computer, on the TV screen. So Jesse, you are on mute?
Hi, everybody, I cannot hear, so I don't know if you can all hear me, but I do see the chat that I'm on. I would love the ability to share if possible. Right now, I'm showing that any one organizer or presenter can share some of the presentation. But while we're doing that, I just wanted to say good evening, thank you all. I wish I could be there in person with you, but good evening, councilmembers, staff. I wish I could be there in person with you, but good evening, councilmembers, staff, residents, thank you for the opportunity here to be able to share our work, and we hope that we all benefit from some of this information I plan to share. Let's say I now have the ability to do that. Shooting the screen. Hopefully you all can see this. Again, my name is Jesse Ibarv. I'm with Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services, also known as NPHS, and we are a nonprofit affordable homeownership provider to community developers. We cover most of the San Bernardino Riverside counties, have now moved into East LA County, Imperial County, and we are multi-family, and we also come during the life of Southern California, to San Luis Obispo, Ventura County, Santa Barbara. We are, we have three main areas of impact. We are a pledge counseling agency, and we provide a lot of different services to help folks get on the path to homeownership and help them stay there. We are a CDFI, which stands for Community Development Financial Institution, and I'll share some of the programs and services we provide with CDFI. And we're also a community housing development organization, also known as the Community Re-Development Organization. So, on our, most of the services that we provide, again, here to help folks get on the path to homeownership and keep them there. So it includes pre-purchase counseling, home buyer education. We provide a lead-out course that folks are required to take if they're receiving any type of subsidy, or get any type of programs. This helps them, again, in this sustainable long-term homeownership, and if they're not ready for homeownership, we can provide one-on-one counseling services that provide action plans to help them, again, get on that path and break down some of the barriers that are preventing them from entering homeownership. We also provide services to existing homeowners through our所以我们 prevention counseling, our reverse mortgage counseling, and we do a lot of good financial empowerment coaching and estate planning workshops. And now, we've been incorporating insurance workshops into the mix because of some of the concerns folks are living in high, or very high-risk fire zone and have experiencing issues with insurance, and are getting to need some of the financial services that we provide to help those individuals in those high-risk regions. Another area of impact, as I mentioned, is that we're CDFI, a Community Development Financial Institution, is essentially a mission-driven bank. We get direct funding from the U.S. Treasury, at least for now, through the CDFI fund, and we also get funding from private organizations, local municipalities, and state. We utilize the CDFI to do mostly direct-to-consumer lending, unlike other CDFIs that are focused on small-business lending, or lending to developers. We're lending to individuals who are interested in achieving a sustained long-term homeownership, affordable homeownership. So our work has been mostly, you know, down payment assistance programs, closing cost assistance programs, and I'll share some of those programs with the management slides. We also provide a lot of home improvement financing grants, and we administer manufactured housing, being new financing program. We even does solar in wildfire preparedness retrofit programs, which is part of our effort to help folks who are in high wildfire risk, or in wild and urban interface zones. Here's some examples of some of the down payment assistance programs we're currently administering. We have the IDP program, which we're funding that we provide to us through U.S. Bank from a foundation, and it's up to forty thousand dollars per household, and this is a zero percent, the court loans, so it's the folks for thirty years, no payments. It is restricted to folks who are eight percent of the area median income, and who are purchasing properties within San Bernardino County, Riverside County. We also administer funding to the city of Menape, up to, you know, fifty thousand dollars, and now we actually can go up to a hundred thousand dollars, and that's the folks who are eighty percent AMI below. And then we have Cal Home funding, which we utilize from the state, and we get typically annual allocations for that, and the current funding source that we have is restricted to opportunity zones within San Bernardino County. And then we have an opportunity fund, which is through the CDFI, and that is, this is actually much higher now, it's up to a hundred thousand dollars, and we can, it's restricted to Imperial County. This funding that's showing on here is currently out, but the new allocation that we received was eight hundred thousand dollars, again, up to a hundred thousand dollars per household for the county of Imperial County. And then lastly, we've been working with the California Association of Realtors on their Pathway to Home Closing Cost Program, this is the grant program up to ten thousand dollars, and we administer this statewide. So anyone who's up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, being represented by a realtor, can access this, and again, it's ten thousand dollars, and those strings attached, it's straight grant, pretty awesome program. Now, onto the Community Redevelopment. We've tried to integrate a lot of different approaches in our affordable homeownership efforts. Incorporating manufactured housing and modular housing is a way to drive down costs for our scavenside infill development work. We utilize community reuse models to also help determine protect affordable homeownership opportunity. We've incorporated energy efficiency and health-conscious features throughout all of our development, and then now began to incorporate wildfire resilience. We were the first organization to incorporate what's called the wildfire prepared designation through the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety, and our latest project, we're incorporating that now in every new development, especially our single-family, for sale homes that are, again, wildfire-risk regions. Through the CDFI, we're sourcing, you know, down payment assistance and leveraging the financing to bridge the gap that our low and moderate-income homeowners face when looking to become homeowners, and we're also leveraging our local government partnerships to help, you know, bridge these gaps and leverage resources to help create sustainable, long-term homeownership opportunities. This slide here is showing our first adventure into the manufactured housing spaces, back to the modular product, the partnership with the city of Chino. We built several homes that were modular, and although this project was successful, and we have beautiful homes and got low-income families in, we didn't see the cost savings we were looking for, so we continued on our journey and began experimenting with utilizing manufactured homes. And at the time, this was the first of its new kind of manufactured home. Manufactured homes are home built to a federal HUD code, and they're governed by the state, California, and we're using what's called a cross-modular home, and you can see sort of the evolution of what these look like in the latest project, or Gateway Demonstration Project, which I have the home behind me on that screen, and here's another look. This is using what's called an MH Advantage home, and this MH Advantage designation, also there's a choice home, allows for these homes to qualify for any type of financing. The federal fight, as the finance agency put out a new new store that all the GSEs include, and then comply with, and essentially, they treat these just like any other homes like state-owned homes, and they really are. They're built, the same exact materials as wood, any other home, they're just being built in a controlled environment. We use all the metric constructions, so they're built in sections, and then placed and installed on a permanent foundation on-site, and the garage is built also on-site. Some of our units, this is a project here that we're saying, there's both a single-family and an accessory dwelling unit. You can see here the interior photos of each, the front unit and the back unit. We don't sacrifice any type of quality of construction whatsoever. As a matter of fact, these are, have a lot of benefits. We see thirty percent cost savings, and there's a big construction management risk mitigation, because there is no change order. When we've submitted order to our factories, that price has not changed. We lock in the price, and this is a great benefit to developers, but also individual homeowners who are looking to build their first home or accessory dwelling unit, and not only is it a more, you know, cost-effective way to do it, but it's also, again, presumably it was a novice to add developing property, it just provides so many benefits on the construction management risk in mitigating a lot of that. And also the site distribution, you know, there, we've been have some site improvements, obviously, to prepare the site for the delivery and installation of the home, but it's cut in half. Seventy percent of the projects done in factory, well, we thirty percent of the work is being done on-site, so that's provides so many benefits. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is, which is, you know, the title there, we're trying to build homes that read, that rise to meet the needs of families and individuals. We don't want to just build because it's less expensive, but we want to make hands, the neighborhood, and we want to provide all of the work. We're able to do that. An example I use is, would you rather have your car built out in the field or in a factory? You know, being built in a controlled environment allows for, you know, a much tighter construction, and it just, again, provides a lot of benefits on the energy efficiency side. We work with factories that can provide mid-zero homes, and there's also a lot of design elements that you can incorporate. You're not stuck with one particular model. Each of our factories, which we work with, we have various models, and on top of that, you can customize them as you please, even when you install them on-site. And this is an example, we partnered with the city of Palm Springs recently to build six single-family homes. These are, you know, the city's known for their mid-century aesthetic, and we wanted to deliver something that conforms to the neighborhood and pay homage to, you know, the historic homes that have been built there. And so you can see the desert island neighborhood homes that we're building, they have a real mid-century look, and we incorporated breeze ways, and, again, this is fiber cement board that we're utilizing on the exterior, not hardwood wood, because it is fire-resistant, and we can use wood that in the same way we would with another wood material, vinyl material, and it's just a non-combustible material which gets us that wildfire prepared designation. All of our units include fire sprinklers, and we even incorporate that into the garage construction as well. So, these are these wonderful homes, amazing examples. Here's another photo of that, of one of the homes that will be built there. We have a lot of flexibility, and again, these aren't your, you know, what most folks think when they think of manufactured homes, these are just like any other homes, they're just being built in a factory. Another venture we're working on, we just found out, I actually showed it with staff last week, and we just had notification yesterday that we did win our proposal for the Gematrie project. It's going to be one of the largest projects the city of Palm Springs has seen in several years, up to two hundred and forty units we plan to build. These are all, this is a multi-family project, this is a for-sale project. We will be doing on-site construction with this particular project. We can see here what this will look like, there will be simply the changes to the layout in terms of moving the parking lot of the office inside so that people don't have to cross that to, you know, enjoy the amenities, but we're really excited about this project, and again, it's just a testament to some of the work we've been doing with the city and our partnerships. We work with a lot of municipalities, and April DeLeon, who's on with us on the call, works with our Housing Rehabilitation Program. And so we partner with a lot of different cities throughout our region, and she'll share some of the work we've been doing with them. And you let me know when you want me to go ahead and through the next line, April. You're on, April.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramirez and Stone, for having us as part of your local meeting tonight. We are also very excited to be here and share what we do in our local municipalities down on this side. Again, as Jesse mentioned, my name is April DeLeon, I am the Director of Home Rehabilitation for NPHS, and so if you want to share with me what we are working, our department administers possibly seven different municipalities in the moment. It includes the city of San Bernardino, the city of Riverside, Chino, Chino Hills, Palm Springs, and the event to the city of Moncler, and the city of Colton. So we do assist homeowners by providing financial grants and also loans to rehab their homes. Our improvements are, should remain anywhere from A.D. compliant showers to roof repair, windows, electrical plumbing. Again, depending on the city's funding and how much, of course, obviously, we can assist with in that particular city, but we've had cities that we've been working with for over twenty years, so we do mirror these programs again in other cities depending on the available funds. So as you can see here, we do have our four services, which, again, are the roof replacement right here, the plumbing, and electrical upgrades, the heating and cooling systems, the specialty building maintenance, window and door replacement, interior interior painting, health and safety, housing renovation. Most of these programs are targeted for our senior community, so helping those age-in-place and staying in their home with what they know and what they're comfortable with. So obviously, our goal is to maintain the quality and safety for our low-income, moderate homeowners in our participating cities. And thank you so much, all of my side, but again, thank you so much for having us.
Thanks, April. So as you can see, you know, we, we're here. Well, this is Karen. I'll skip that. So Karen, Karen is unfortunately not able to be here, but is on our community building engagement team, she actually is that effort, and what that's why we're sharing was our neighborhood partnership councils and that framework. And so we backed into the vital conditions framework, and we're specifically focused on our housing piece, but we know how important it is to have a successful, sustainable community, all of the other resources that's needed outside of just housing. So the idea is, we want to enterprise community voices through our neighborhood partnership councils, we want to work with communities to figure out what their needs are, figure out how to connect them with the resources that they need to make their communities great, and then where we fit, meaning any services that we provide, we want to connect them with those services more efficiently and effectively. That could be working with employers, working with employers on the assisted housing program, or working with the community at the community level to bring in much-needed resources, even if it's outside of our specific realm, we can help find the partners to fill those gaps. And so here's our contact information, and we're open to answer any questions that anyone may have, and I'll stop sharing.
I have a couple of questions. Can you hear me?
Jesse, can you hear us?
I can hear you, please. I can hear you.
Perfect. We're gonna see if the city council can ask questions of you. So Mayor Protem, would you like to give it a try?
Yes, can you hear me, April? I have a first question's for you.
Ms. DeLeon, could you hear that? Tell you what, why don't you pass this to Mayor Protem?
Okay, can you hear me, Ms. DeLeon? Okay. Now, on your, when you were talking about the city for rehabilitation of the houses, you talked about how much the city funding, is this, is this, city funding would have to fund all these folks' repairs?
The city would apply for funding, so our funding range is from Cal Home Fund, DDP Fund, the U fund, so the city's an appropriate additional funding for these repairs. So, yes, they would be all through the city. Some of them are grants, and then some of them are loan programs.
But the loan program is for the city, not the homeowner?
It's funded through the city for the homeowner, yes.
So we would have to put the money up for it?
Typically, the cities would apply to HUD or to the CD, if you're not in the Taliban City, to request appropriations. There's programs like the Home Partnership Program through HUD that is very commonly used by municipalities to fund their programs, and also CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds is also used, and as April mentioned, sometimes we do Cal Home. We don't suspect Cal Home, because the state budget cuts will be around next year, but we will, we do expect Home to continue in CDBG, and so this is, these are funds that the city could apply for. They would request that the city submit guidelines as part of their proposal. We can help them craft some of those, and what happens is cities, once they have the funding, they work with us and hire us to help deploy the capital and do the construction management. So we be sure that it goes out to the folks, and who's supposed to go out to, and keep the city in compliance with the federal dollars that are used.
Okay, now you said we had hired you. What fees, do you do a percentage? Like, is this an administrator fee?
Yeah, it's typically a project delivery or administrative fee that we charge. Depending on the activities. Depends, so some cities, we only, we're only doing construction management, so it's a reduced fee, and then sometimes we're doing the entire program, so we, we are putting together their guidelines, we are, again, doing the marketing, doing the intake process, counseling work, then we also, you know, Then we also, you know, ensure that they're eligible, we deploy the money for the city, we find the contractors, help them, we say, help the homeowner find the contractors, help them with the negotiation process, and then manage the project till it's completed and they get a certificate of occupancy. And then close out the file for them and provide them a copy for auditing purposes. In that case, it's typically up to 20% for the full, for the full gap.
20% of the cost of the homes?
No, 20% of the funding that is utilized. So for example, if you apply for the funding and you get, you know, a hundred thousand dollars from HUD, you know, we would take 20,000 dollars of that for administration.
Okay. Okay, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Anyone else, council? Questions?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't really have any other questions. I just, I appreciate the slide where it said the Desert Highland Neighborhood, the Desert Highland Gateway Estates. That's actually the neighborhood where I'm from in Palm Springs. And so I know the area very well. And so I definitely want to explore and see how we can make housing a priority in the city of 29 Palms. So look forward to carrying that conversation forward.
These will be on the community's assets, by the way, all six. And so they'll be affordable for 99 years. And we're going to sell them at a little less, $200,000 each. But the city did make quite a happy commitment upfront to make that happen. But in the long run, it will only be spending less than $4,000 on subsidy per unit over those 99 years. It's a goal.
All right, is that up here? Up to the public? Oh, it's presentation? Oh, yeah. It's been so long. No one wants to say nothing? That's even better. All right, that's for you.
Okay, very good. So Jesse and April, thank you so much for making the time and this evening's presentation. Myself and Councilwoman Ramirez will follow up with you later this week with any additional questions.
Other council members will too.
Oh, and other council members will too.
Thank you.
You bet.
Council comments and reports that we need to attend to, Councilwoman Ramirez.
I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Karma Shade Clothing. Very good, affordable clothes. I was able to get two outfits and a pair of shoes for less than $25. It is right next to Momogies and they specifically specialize, I guess, they specialize in children's clothing, which is very important to me since my kids are constantly growing. I went to the city of 29 Palms Juneteenth Celebration. I also attended the Women of Color Juneteenth Celebration. I attended the San Bernardino Office of Homeless Services East Valley Regional Survey Committee meeting. And then I also attended a meeting with a local nonprofit and NPHS to discuss the next steps for a low-income age-restricted housing project that they are working on and that would be specifically tailored for seniors and veterans. And I also went to our T-Bid meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Scott?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony. It is technically our third year doing it. It's our second year doing it here at City Hall. I want to just thank the Mayor, Mayor Bildren, last year for making that move from Freedom Plaza to City Hall to raise that Juneteenth Flag. I also attended the Juneteenth Celebration that was presented in collaboration with the city of 29 Palms and Women of Color Global Nonprofit. I went to the grand opening for Karma Shade Clothing. And we had a lot of representatives from our elected offices, from the State Senate, US Congress, and State Assembly Office as well. So it was well-attended, a lot of community members, it was a great event. And I went to a community shower event at Wingin' It. And, you know, it was, it was a really good, it was a very collaborative event. You had multiple different nonprofits working together along with private, with private business. And 15 people, at least 15 people actually received showers that day. And one of the, one of the people that received a shower and a haircut went job hunting that day. And that's powerful. Flag Day was on June 14th. I actually attended that before the Juneteenth Celebration and retired my, my US flag. And so that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. And, and I rode a bull, I'm sorry. And I rode a bull at Historic Plaza's barbecue. Thank you, Susan.
Mayor Protem, it's?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended both the celebrations for Juneteenth, the one at Nut Sky Park and the flag raising. I went to the, well, actually before that, the SPTCA new director, Carrie, she came to 29 Palms, met with the city manager myself, just, just have a meet and greet, just because she's just taking over. The last person that was there, Mr. Wolf, he's been there for 13 years. So just a change of leadership. So she, she knew 29 Palms, which is good because she worked for the county prior to this. So that was, that was good to hear that we didn't, she didn't have to be totally someone who didn't even know where we were at. Went to Victorville for the Mountain Desert Measure Eye Meeting. Let's see, also I went to, back to Victorville on Monday to the MDAQMD meeting. We approved the budget. And then also I helped park cars up at Skies Unlimited last Saturday. They had 98 people. I was hoping to meet the person from Sweden. They signed up to park, to come to the, the Nut Sky, Night Sky viewing, but they didn't show up. So that was kind of a bummer. I wanted to talk to them. But there's a lot of people from out of town. Obviously, there was only, out of all the folks that were signed up, there was only three people from 29 Palms that were on that list and only one showed up. So, and these are all folks that come from out of town to utilize our night skies. A lot of them said, because I was the one intaking them. And they just said, yeah, we just come here because where we live, we can't see the sky. So that was kind of good to hear. So that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I attended the Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony here at City Hall. Also the ribbon-cutting at Karma Shade Clothing, meeting with citizens and been spending a lot of my time in the sun. If you can't tell, the, all the All-Star Games that our Little League is representing in Yucca Valley. So there's a lot of baseball and softball games going on the last two weekends. And what else? Historical Plaza barbecue, I was there. I spent a lot of money on barbecue. And I wasn't getting on the bull, but I ate too much, wasn't going to do that. So I saw you spinning around.
You saw me?
Yeah, I was watching. I saw other people going, I'm not going to embarrass myself. But then eventually I line danced, so there's no video of that. So I don't think there's any video. Yeah, I went to the front so I could see me because they were watching the people in the back. So, but it was a good time. Anyone here from a story besides Susan? Where's Paul for Paul? Yeah, but no Paul, huh? But awesome, awesome event, once again. Well, a lot of foot traffic in and out and a lot of smiles and a lot of kids running around. So it was a good time. So thank you for that. And we're moving on. It's all out of order, so bear with me. Boom, boom, boom. Yeah, that's it. Public hearing done, discussion potential action items. Number nine, Term Business Improvement District City Council Subcommittee.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor. So this evening's discussion is really centered around kind of a more proactive integration of the city council with the T-Bid. The T-Bid, as you are aware, currently operates under the tax structure, operates under a 1998, 1990, 1989 district law. And what that means is it gives the ability for our region to exercise, to impose a tax on the tourists that come and stay at our hotels. And that has to be, that, that district has to be renewed every year. And the T-Bid has been working for the last several years, or thinking about the last several years, of making a change from the 1989 law to a 1994 law. The 1994 would be a district conversion, converting from a 1989 district to a 1994 district. What that, the change would allow is it would allow, at least in the first year, in the first term of operation, it would allow the T-Bid to exist for five years. Right, so currently, every single year, the T-Bid, the staff, the board, they have to spend time creating a plan for the following year and essentially going out to the stakeholders and asking the stakeholders, do you want to continue to have this district continue to exist? Takes a lot of time. It actually typically takes about three months out of the 12 months to do that work. The challenge of that is that, that leaves roughly nine months of the year to complete the work that is needed in an entire year. And so when you take a look at the state, there are a number of, they're called DMOs, Direct Marketing Organizations. And when you take a look statewide, three-fourths, or 75% of the DMOs throughout the entire state of California operate under the 1994 district law. And so based on the recent T-Bid meeting, T-Bid realized that while they were hoping to make the conversion this year from a 1989 law to a 1994 law, they decided to take a pause, decided to take a knee. And they wanted to do that because they wanted to be able to go out and really interact with the relevant stakeholders. Interact with the city council, interact with their lodging partners, and interact with the commercial businesses that really add to the color and the flair and the attractiveness of this destination. So as a consequence, at the last T-Bid meeting, the T-Bid Board made the decision that they're going to pause on the 1994 attempt to convert, the 1994 district conversion. They're going to pause on that. They're going to move forward with the, the standard renewal that they've done every year since they started, I want to say, eight years ago. So they're going to come to council in September for a renewal of their 1989 law. And they're also going to begin really a stakeholder outreach. And so tonight's agenda item, the creation of a city council subcommittee, would be part of that. Because really, the council represents, well, the whole community, right? And so the council really should have a voice, a, a better voice within T-Bid. And it would be part of the overall T-Bid's effort to really take a look at their mission, vision, values, and goals. And the hope, the plan, is that with the council's support, the creation of the subcommittee and the T-Bid going out and interacting with the community and the relevant stakeholders, that over the course of the next six months or nine months, they will be able to really understand the role and get consensus on the role that T-Bid should play. This is going to be vital in order to create the five-year plan, budgets and the actual plan that's necessary for the 1994 conversion. So it is complex. I think it is one of the things T-Bid is going to be doing. They're going to be having workshops to explain to the community the importance of making this conversion from 1989 to 1994. And so there's going to be many conversations because, again, this is a complex subject, but it's very important because based on my training and experience, the current structure is really holding us back. But we are a city, we're, we're not a one-stoplight city. We're really growing, we're changing, we're dynamic. And this, the, this creation of the Subcommittee tonight and the efforts that T-Bid is doing is really geared towards being responsive and doing our best to grow the T-Bid along with our growing community. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council?
Thank you very much, Dr. Stone James. I think that this is just common sense smart policy, to be honest. We've had issues, you know, with, with oversight with the T-Bid. And I think that this is moving in the right direction. My only question would be, in the future, when we move forward, if we move forward with the five-year, the 94 law, will there still be a council subcommittee for that oversight? Or does that, does the law prevent that?
So I can, I am, I'm deepening my, my understanding of the 1994 law. What I can speak to is there's no reason why the council could not continue to have that subcommittee. And then one of the things that I have asked the head of our T-Bid, Brian Desostre, who is, has just been a tremendous professional, is to really highlight the control and the involvement and the input that the city council will have on the T-Bid should it be converted to a 1994 conversion. And, and at a minimum, that, that control or that influence, that overview would come in the form that it currently does. And that is, is every year, the council would have the ability to, or would actually have the expectation of, reviewing the budget for the upcoming year. And so as I sit here this evening, my understanding is council would still be able to exercise the, the oversight that I believe that they would like to have on that organization. But in terms of tonight, in terms of the Subcommittee, I would see no reason why it could not continue once it goes into a 94 conversion.
Thank you very much, sir.
Well, even under the current, the way it's currently ran, the way it's been running since 2017, we still approve their budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we're still going to review their budget if it's that law or this, this law. So this is, this is just basically an interaction between two council members for them as in with, with the T-Bid Board. And, and are they going to be just meeting with the director and then, and the board? I mean, I'm a little, I guess, I mean, it's going to be like, are two councilmen going to be like, directing their director?
That, that's, that's a fair question. I, the, the thought process behind this, and the, the thought process behind this is there, there has been a concern, or the concerns have been brought to me and brought to Brian, is that what, what input has city council had on the T-Bid Board? And one could argue that the T-Bid has done very well in trying to create something out of nothing, right? They, they started in 2017 and it's a bit of a moving target and they responded to COVID. And they have been trying to perfect the model that they have. One of the things that was kind of realized was, hey, the city council plays clearly a vital, vital role, an instrumental role into the effective operation of the city. Is there a way that we could create a mechanism which would allow a little bit more of city council input into some of the thought and some of the strategy of T-Bid? And so the thought process was if there was a Subcommittee created, this would allow, no more than two, this would allow two city council members to have more interactions with, let's say, the, the Board. I don't know if so much, potentially, certainly, you could do two-on-twos, right? Where you could have two city council members meet with two Board members. Or of course, if the T-Bid wanted to have the two city council members presented at a discussion, they certainly could, although I don't see that happening. I would certainly have interaction with the, the two council members, as would Brian, probably Brian and I. Because I think one of the challenges is it's just her. So this is also an opportunity for me to be more of a collaborator with Brian, so she's not just on an island. And so I, I don't know that this is, the intent is not to have a city council dominance on this advice, on this Board, because really, these Boards, one could argue, are subject matter experts in their field. But this, the, the hope, the, the goal, the aim, is to ensure that the T-Bid Board, it's kind of like this, they can't hit a target they don't have. And so is this an opportunity for the city council to communicate to the T-Bid Board? Hey, here is the target. You know, you're putting your arrows on the target, right? But you're down here in the, the eight ring. And we would like you to move your arrows up into the nine and the 10 ring. And so that's really the hope, is that this mechanism would allow council that input so that council feels better, more secure, whatever the word is, when they go for the 1994 conversion, that they have created a five-year plan, which is required, the 1994, that the council feels meets the community's needs. But it's just a thought. If the council doesn't agree with that, that is totally fine.
Mr. Mayor Protem, the way I, the way I think it, you know, it would work best is that this sub, this oversight Subcommittee would be a voice, an item, a voice from constituents as well as stakeholders. So they're receiving information from them. You know, because right now, I don't think a lot of the stakeholders know where they want to go or the constituents want to go to have their answers questioned, or their questions answered about T-Bid. And so I think it just kind of adds a little bit more organization. And so, I think it just kind of adds a little bit more organization, but I don't, I think it's needed.
Mayor Protem, there's one other thing too, that I might be able to contribute to the discussion here. And that is, is that one could suggest there is a little bit of a, kind of a chicken or the egg situation here. And that is, this tax, this T-Bid assessment, one point five percent, is levying on the tourists that stay in hotels. And so, maybe understandably, the T-Bid board has really consisted of people from the lodging industry. Now, if you were to take a look at kind of that whole ecosystem, so this is a wonderful place to live and to visit and recreate, but it is a great place to visit, not just because of the hotels, because there's all of these restaurants, there's ancillary, there's here a great bowling alley, not, not to, you know, kind of, kind of close by. And so, what is the opportunity to ensure that the voice of the, the commercial businesses that contribute to the experience of this destination, what degree should their voice be delivered to or be a part of the T-Bid conversation? I don't know the answer to that, because they could also, the commercial businesses could also create their own assessment, they have chosen not to do that, and no judgment on that, that's just a decision that I understand they've made. So, so is council's involvement, would council involvement better enable those voices to be the voices of the commercial businesses that support the hotels to be present within the T-Bid? That's just a thought. If there's other thoughts from the council, I'd love to hear it. We're trying to, you know, we're kind of building the plane while we're flying the plane here.
No? We're down up here? Right? Mary Jamie?
Hey, last one goes first on the top, right?
Well, I'll know that for the future. So, one thing that was said is that, that we were being notified of things through the T-Bid, which I have yet to receive a notification of anything. That's one of my biggest complaints. Two, what I keep hearing is Breann's job is marketing and marketing, but she is having to run the visitor center, which takes away from the job that she was hired to do. So I'm, I'm very confused about the actuality of what is happening with T-Bid. What are, what's the guidelines, what's the rules, what's, what, what should we look for? And, and I, I don't understand, if, if we're on a five-year plan, and it takes three months to do a one-year plan, then are, are they planning out five years in the, you know, in the three months that it takes to do the plan? Or is every year for five years, you got to keep plan going forward? So I don't see the benefit. You're still going to have that time to make the plans. But back to Breann being overworked and not being able to do all that she hopes to accomplish, then I think that's up to the city to do something about the visitor center. And, and give her some, give her some help, or hire somebody. I mean, that used to be the Chamber of Commerce. And Breann was never hired to run the Chamber of Commerce. So I think you really need to look, as a city, you really need to look at what her job is, what you expect from her, and how can you help her? Thank you.
Thank you. Vino?
Pull it in order.
I'm ready.
Put it right down. I know you are.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have hotels in other cities that also has T-Bid. And when the T-Bid was first formed, I was approached because I had three hotels in the city, and I was a huge advocate. But I'm very disappointed the way our T-Bid is operated in our city. Let me jog your mayor, let me jog your memory, Mayor and, and Mayor Protem. Our T-Bid admin director worked for the Twenty-Nine Palms Inn, and she was brought in as a T-Bid director. Twenty-Nine Palms Inn owner served on the T-Bid board. When she left, I believe, her staff came on. Our chairman has been the chairman from the day it was, it was accepted. Ben, who was appointed to the T-Bid, was not a stakeholder. And I specifically asked our city manager at that time, and both the council members, how does the T-Bid operate? And I was told that none of the staff of the city would be paid from the T-Bid. And just about six months ago, I learned that your staff, the city staff, our, our staff is paid from the T-Bid funds. I think our T-Bid needs to go through a major, major overhaul as to how it is, how it is operated. I'm not against the T-Bid, but we need to bring some changes about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Monopolous?
Okay, I wasn't planning on speaking to this topic, but I think it's appropriate that I do. As a, as an owner of a vacation rental, it's very popular, we pay a large amount of TOT, and the, the budget for the, for the T-Bid is something in over three hundred or five hundred thousand dollars a year. It's, it's a, it's a big number. And I want to say that I'm very strongly in favor of establishing the city council subcommittee. That's the recommendation, to help the T-Bid. I'm not against the T-Bid, I'm in favor of the T-Bid, but there's a disconnect between the city council and the T-Bid, and let me explain. The, the budget for the T-Bid is spent on the staff and trying to promote tourism to this, to the city, mainly to bring people into the hotels and the vacation rentals. But it doesn't really do anything to bring in businesses to the city. So meanwhile, the economic development budget of the city for twenty twenty-four spent less than two thousand dollars for the entire year for economic development for the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. And I think there's a big problem there. It may be that some of the money that's coming into the T-Bid should be allocated for economic development by bringing in other businesses that would be amenities that the vacationers that come to the city could benefit from. So I think a lot of the people that come to the city, the hotels are great, Airbnbs are great, but not enough restaurants, not enough other things to do. So, I, I, I'm in favor of this, having a subcommittee to, to help the T-Bid and try to work together to kind of balance the budgets, the economic development budget for the city and the T-Bid budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Bernard?
Hi, yeah, I also had absolutely not planned, because I, to talk on this, because I've sort of said I'm not going to talk on the T-Bid anymore, I've done it for so long. But I did want to give my insight, having been on the inside of the T-Bid for the time it took to write up the grant guidelines and that granting process that they have, and what I saw. And I also, I actually agree with George and with Mary, that, 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 I think that, that what council would learn, I mean, it was an incredible learning experience to, to see what was happening inside that organization. And I think that if council created this subcommittee, they would learn a lot about what's working and not working within T-Bid, and, and that's very hard to see from the outside. And, and I think you would learn that Breann is not the marketing director, she's the director of the T-Bid. She's doing a lot of the work that some of the board members, in fact, should probably be doing. I think there's been some improvement with the new board members who have taken on some of that work, but there are also board members that come to the meetings and do nothing else. So, it's really a challenged organization, and I think that that subcommittee could both maybe help Breann, but also maybe even teach the board a little bit about what it means to give direction to, to the director. Because right now, that doesn't really happen, so she's really on her own. And then she gets raked over the coals for doing things she didn't do, but she's actually not received any direction to do them. So, it's, there are all sorts of internal problems there that I think that kind of oversight and involvement could help with. And I endorse the idea of the one-year pause, moving towards the ninety-four law. I do understand why they need the five-year period in order to function, having run a five oh one C three nonprofit myself. You know, they would be a five oh one C six, I think. So, yeah, I was going to say something else about your comment about the economic development. I don't know about taking from the one point five percent, but there's nine percent that goes into the general fund, right? So, you know, maybe there's a percentage of that nine percent that's going into the general fund that could be set aside for the economic development that's so desperately needed in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Mendez?
Hello? Eric Mendez, live in Twenty-Nine Palms, used to have a business called The Lobby, but my building got foreclosed upon, as you might have read that in the paper. I'm going to start with the compliment sandwich, Caitlin used that last time, and one of my directors, Chris Scoonover, used to use that with our employees, I hate it, it's sugarcoating. You know, I'm a nurse, I'm a professional, I have thirty years' experience, kind of looking back, I started when I was eighteen, you know, working for Cedars-Sinai, and I have a lot of IT experience. You know, the problem isn't Breann. And despite what Kurt may have to say in his paper article, I'm not an anti-T-Bid critic, I'm pro-T-Bid. I've shown up for the last six years trying to lobby for more resources for Breann. The problem isn't her, it's the board. They're not giving her the adequate oversight, they're not showing up and understanding how to run a meeting under the Brown Act, they're not engaging the constituents, and as Susan said, I don't remember the exact quote, but silence, yada, yada, yada. So, I, I'm also very disappointed, you know, I think we got it wrong with Ben. I have no, no problem with Resett Hotels, it's a great thing, it's beautiful. But we have, you know, the issue with the planning and the power lines, there was a lot of, you know, questionable stuff, you know? I had a company that did business all over this basin, out to Wunder Valley, all the way down to Morongo Valley. And every campground and every person with the big eyes came out here wanting to strike it rich, you know? And my staff dealt with it, I dealt with it, and when the market hit the fan, who's fault is it? It's mine, you know what I mean? And I do take accountability for that, and I've internalized it. And I, and I was really excited when I heard our new, our new city manager had an economic development background, and I thought we would be headed in the right direction since he came last year. But, you know, we had the floods, we had that. I was planning to leave before the flood, and then when the flood happened, and I saw all the great stuff here, and, and I was, I was inspired. And, you know, I thought things were going to change, and it's just the same old thing. And then I had a great meeting with the Yalque Valley Film Festival producer, Kitchen to the Desert, he wanted to go there, he changed it, we were supposed to go to Beer Company. We were, we talked for about an hour, and Francois and Desert General people came out, and they're talking in French, I don't know what they were saying. And we're heading out to my truck, and out comes Ashton Ramsey chasing me, you're not allowed on my property, I don't like why you, what you're talking, and I'm like, I've never said anything bad about this guy, you know, except for what I say here, on the record, on the camera, okay? And, and, you know, we just need to take, say, hey, let's educate the board, let's engage the stakeholders, we've been asking for it for seven years. I mean, Vicki Wade, I mean, last meeting, when she came and she talked about losing the funding for her project, she did a great job back, and she was, she worked for the city. And, and I do appreciate Councilmember Ramirez, I mean, Octavius, you, you came to my, my booth, which apparently, they say doesn't meet destination, and, oh, by the way, Stone, it's, it's destination marketing organization, not direct. DMOs like a, a sales of cars and stuff, or stuff you get from Timu. So, in short, I, I, I really have enjoyed my six years, or eight years here, however it is, you know, I mean, just to be a bankrupt business owner dodging the repo, man, but, you know, I want what's best for the city, thank you.
Thank you. Back up here? It was right behind his, that's why it stuck together. Susan Pippel? No, it was...
Thank you. Well, that's a lot to follow up on, but we are in a bit of a unique situation today because there's actually five stakeholders in the audience today. One hotelier and four VHR operators, which you don't really see very often, but we're actually here by, for whatever purpose. So, in regards to this specific agenda item, not to go too far off into the weeds, I completely support having a subcommittee onto the T-Bid. However, I would like to hope that it is an engaged city council subcommittee that would be attending these sessions and help giving support and guidance to the T-Bid board, much as has been mentioned, and as you've heard from me previously and other people that have spoken tonight, outreach is really tough. You know, stakeholders are not being engaged. I'm not sure we're fully working with partners such as Rediscover Twenty-Nine, other business owners, other organizations within the city. Much like what George was saying, you know, it's like, and even Cindy, you know, if we have tourism that's coming in, that actually does build businesses, because as we're start to thrive and it becomes attractive, more people come out, like, I'm going to open a shop here, or I'm going to do this here, I'm going to buy a property here. So what I'm looking for from the city council is to support the initiative of having a subcommittee, but one that's engaged, none of this like talking behind closed doors, because what you're missing is the fact that meetings are not being run as they should. They're not calling for public comment. Comments, you have motions on the floor that are getting stifled and talked over and don't even get a second. You know, those are real problems. And I think with your guidance and being familiar with how to run public meetings, that could really help them, set new, set new tones. And another thing that, I, I see it here, I'm here a bunch, right? Planning Commission, City Council, you use really specific words, what is the direction from, for staff? Keith uses it all the time, never comes up in T-Bid. So Breann gets no direction from the board. So that's where, with your mentorship, where maybe we could see some progress. So, you know, I, I did write some stuff down, none of which I'm actually reading, but if you had an improved structure, staff can then operate with clear direction and timelines. So then we can see, hey, next, next meeting, right? What got done? What's next? Where do I need help? It's, it's always random. And what's worse is not always at random, we can't prepare, as, I'll just finish this last thought, we can't prepare as stakeholders to show up and be part of the conversation because we don't really ever know what the conversation's going to be, because there's been no previous direction from the board. So please, accept the subcommittee, but show up. Because backdoor conversations is not what this organization needs. Thanks.
Thank you. Back up here? Council?
Well, I don't have a problem with the subcommittee. What I'm not sure is how engaged we can be during the meeting, be in the oversight committee, I mean, be in the oversight, in other words, to, to council members, how, how, they, how engaged can they be during a meeting?
Good question. I, I don't necessarily, thank you for that clarification, I don't see this really as engagement of the council subcommittee during the T-Bid meeting. This would be engagement with board members or engagement with Breann and myself outside of the meetings. Because really, that T-Bid board, I, I think that would be a problematic dynamic if two council members were trying to exert undue influence over the operation of the board during a meeting, right? That meeting is that board's operation and that is that board, right?
I guess, I'm thinking there's probably some kind of legal precedence over that also.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, I just want to clarify that, because I don't have, I don't have a problem with this, because we have, we have a whole list of subcommittees. So I don't have a problem with the subcommittee, I just want to make sure that we're not, I'd be almost like two of us showing up at the planning commission meeting and, and at the same time.
Thank you, thank you for that clarity. That was, yeah, I, I should have done a better job of articulating in that. Yeah, this is not for that subcommittee to have a material presence, I mean, they may attend, like a city council member may attend a planning commission meeting?
In the audience.
In the audience, maybe in the back lobby, but yeah, this is not intended for the council to, to direct the meeting or have undue influence.
Okay. I just, I guess I, and, 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 so I, I understand what you're trying to get at, Okay, I just, I guess I, and, 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 so, so I, I understand what you're trying to get at, but there's things that we have, we can't step on for the protocol. I mean, it's just, we'd be opening up a can of worms.
No, we, we don't want to do that. And, and you know, one of the things too that was also mentioned was that, uh, it was the, that Breann and the, her assistant are being paid out of the general fund, and that is not accurate. Breann's salary and the, uh, the great professional Dakota, no, Oregon, who is there, I knew it was a state. Uh, Oregon, who's there, they are being paid, their salaries are paid out of the T bid budget.
I don't think that's what they said, though. I think they said that there might have been staff being paid, like city staff from the T bid. That's not true, though, right, either, just to clarify?
It was, yeah, so, yeah, the, the, the staff that runs T bid is paid through T bid dollars. So, yeah, so, thank you very much.
All right, so, are you, okay, we're moving on. No sidebars. Subcommittee.
Are you ready for a motion?
Uh, yeah, everyone's done talking about it? Do you want to say anything?
So I actually have been attending some of the meetings. Sometimes I sit up here, sometimes I sit in the back, sometimes I hide over there. Sorry.
No, that's good. Keep going, keep going. You're, you're on a roll.
Oh, okay, sorry, a lot of, just kinda, sorry about that. Um, and, and I really have been meeting with, with constituents and learning, you know. As far as the way that I think, um, again, I agree, you can't, this isn't a one-man show. Um, there, the word unity is in community. We need to work together. But I do agree that we need to have more direction, more metrics, measurable outcomes. And, you know, just remember that where there is no vision, the people perish. So, uh, vision and, and all of that, and I think that a subcommittee of council members to help mentor the T bid would really, um, contribute to further growth.
All right, so same as me, you don't, you're one?
No.
Okay, you're gonna fall, you're gonna fall over?
No, I was asking if you had a, you want to read for a motion?
But before we go to motion, I was sitting in the back too, so the T bids, I hide a lot, because I don't want the presence, right? So then I did a lot of digging of things we can and can't do as a council. So we, our hands are really tied on some of the things we could do, because it's theirs. So unfortunately, I brought up to the staff about the subcommittee gives a little bit more fingers and hands in the pot to stir some stuff and make things happen. Staff did their research, recommended this is a good, this could be good. So, of course, I'm for it, because I think some of the things that we could do will help them. You know, basic training on how to hold a meeting, what can and can't do. If they don't hit the wickets, they'll be hearing from one of us from the subcommittee, they're saying, this is what you did wrong in that last meeting and how we fix it. Those are the basics right there in the beginning. And then the community outreach, the notifications, and how do we use that money the right way for our community? Because I know their mindset as a business owner, it's this big. We'll bring in the outer ring of bigger targets. So that was my conversation with staff on how to do this subcommittee, just to get us legally. There's a lot more, a lot of more things, a lot more things we have to go through the murky waters, what we can and can't do. But I think step one is running productive meeting, and then we'll go from there. So I, I'm for it, of course, so can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we establish a T bid oversight, uh, subcommittee of two council members, consisting of Councilwoman April Ramirez and Mayor Bildurin.
Oh, I'll second. Thanks.
Okay.
All those in favor? Is it easy?
Aye.
You go, roll call, just for official.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright, absent. Mayor Proton Minz.
Aye.
Mayor Bildurin.
Aye.
Approved, approved 401.
All right, number 10, Housing and Homelessness Committee reorganization.
Great, and thank you very much, Mayor. So we're gonna have a, a brief, uh, presentation here, PowerPoint presentation. It's probably no more than 30 slides, so it shouldn't take more than an hour.
As long as you're not talking after, I'll listen.
And so, uh, so, yeah, if you could, uh, progress, oh, yeah, you betcha, thank you very much. Is it gonna work? I guess so. Okay, very good. So, uh, for the audience, I know the council is familiar with this. So this Housing and Homelessness Committee was created on April 25th of 2023. And it was really done in an effort to allow maybe a little bit more advisory from a team of seven individuals on what we could do to bring more market rate housing to the city, more subsidized housing, or commonly referred to as affordable housing. And then also what can be done with, uh, what can be done about the homelessness issue. And so ultimately, that was the goal of that agenda item, that agenda. That staff report, rather, that April 2023 staff report is included in this overall staff report. Uh, the action that it was ultimately taken was that this committee was formed, and then two additional individuals were added to this, uh, committee. One of which is actually the audience today, uh, the under is Ms. Andrea Keller. And those two individuals would join the five members of the city's planning commission. And as a body of seven, when there have been different homelessness issues that have come up, they have gotten together and they have discussed what could be done to help with the homelessness situation. Uh, there have been several recommendations that the committee has made in the two years, roughly, that it has been in existence. Uh, one of the things was they had analyzed the number of different agencies that offer services for unhoused. Uh, they ended up creating a fact sheet that contained all of the different resource numbers so that if there was a person who was unhoused who wanted assistance, uh, they could find it. Uh, they had made a recommendation, I believe, to purchase a shower. Uh, ultimately, that was not acted on for a variety of reasons. And so, and then most recently, the proposal for an organization called Molding Hearts came before them. Uh, that motion passed and was ultimately recommended to the city council. And, uh, as the community may recall, Molding Hearts was an organization that is really focused on addressing the, uh, the root of homelessness, or address some of those key factors that cause homelessness. And so, so I think that committee has had some, uh, meaningful work that has been done. They've had an important impact on the unhoused. And so what I did here was I went back and I did 10 years of research to the point and time count that the County of San Bernardino provided. And what I did was, since this may be a little bit difficult for the folks in the audience or at home to read, uh, I decided to kind of make it a little bit larger. And so, you know, here we had in 2016, we counted off with a point in time count of 32 unhoused individuals in our city. I also decided to take a look at, because, you know, numbers, they need, they, things are relative, right? And so what was going on in Yucca Valley at the time, what about Barstow? Because that's a loosely comparable city to our city. And then also, of course, what is going on, uh, within San Bernardino County? And so those were some of the numbers, and you see some fluctuations, 32, 38, 20, 40, 45. Uh, in 2021, for purposes of the graph, I just used the 2020 numbers. Although in 2021, due to COVID, there was no point in time count conducted. And so hence the zeros, uh, year-over-year change. Uh, 2022, 15, uh, 2023 and 2024, you saw a, a, well, in one case, a 400% increase. Uh, and, and really, I have, based on some comments that I've had with people who are involved in the point in time count, there were some, uh, some numbers that were incorrectly reported that excessively inflated our point in time count numbers. And then ultimately, in 2025, uh, there were, uh, 14 unhoused individuals. And so here's really kind of a, the depiction here with this graphic on how those numbers have looked. Uh, I also decided to add the gold number, uh, the gold line at the top. That actually is San Bernardino County. San Bernardino County, of course, they have just under 4,000 unhoused individuals within the whole, total county. And you'll see the gold, uh, the gold line, that relates to the, that's a secondary access. Those numbers are located on the right side of the graph. The other three cities, 29, Yucca, and Barstow, those blue, green, and brown. Uh, those relate to the numbers on the left side of the graph. And so, anyway, so with that, uh, there are some potential actions that the city council can take. They can expand the number of appointees, or they can reduce the number of appointees. Uh, they can remove planning commissioner members from the community. Uh, they can create a city council Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee, like was just done with T bid. Or they could eliminate the committee altogether. Uh, one of the things that city staff and Councilmember, uh, Member Ramirez, along previously with Councilmember Scott, uh, are involved with the, it's a very long, San Bernardino County Office of Homeless Services Continuum of Care East Desert Regional Steering Committee. So this East Desert Regional Steering Committee is a meeting, is a committee that meets every month, meets in Joshua Tree. And it's got stakeholders that deal with unhoused individuals throughout our entire basin. It was one of the things that we receive as a basin, is we receive funding from the county, which ultimately comes from the state and the federal government, to help address homelessness. And so this city recognizing Councilwoman Ramirez, Councilmember Scott realizing the importance of serving the unhoused, uh, we have a strong presence on that board. I am the co-chair, Robin Slosser from the senior center. She has been so kind as to also serve as the co-chair of the board. And then Councilwoman Ramirez is a current board member. So as a city, we have a very strong presence on that committee. And so those are the options for council consideration.
Council questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you. I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I think that we've moved kind of towards a different direction, and I think that we should kind of look at doing a subcommittee of, of, of two council members.
I don't have a lot of details yet, because they're just, um, at, um, our last SBTCA meeting, uh, the first of the month, the, the board approved, um, I want to say it's almost $700,000 to, they're gonna do a study. It's not, and it's not quite a study, it's also, they're gonna collaborate with the county. They're gonna try to put everything together that, so that there's like, one, everybody's gonna know what's going on from everybody, kind of what some of the people are talking about in the audience today. They're gonna actually be able, everybody's gonna actually be able to know who to talk to, when to talk to them. And if this person has this problem, they'll go, oh, you gotta go to that department. And automatically already know how to do this. And like I say, I don't have any details, because they just started doing this, because there's so many committees, there's so many people doing so many things out there, that everybody doesn't know what they're doing. So I'm just saying, that's a little bit down the road as, as far as there is actually gonna be more, even more help for everybody. And this is gonna be by the county, so it's, each city is gonna be able to take advantage of all these great services. So that's, like I say, I don't have a lot of details, because we just approved the, uh, the funding for it, so they could put this thing together. So, again, there you go with consultants.
Any last counsel, if I go to public?
Please correct me if I'm wrong. I was already under the impression that the Housing and Homeless Committee was, those members were appointed by the planning commission. Um, I'm not done yet. By the people that appointed the planning commission, which was you and I when we did it, uh, when we did our interviews, correct?
We, we never got that far. Those individuals were before.
So how were, how were those, the individuals on the Housing and Homeless Committee selected?
They were selected by, um, myself and Bildurin as part of the planning committee, commission, plus selection subcommittee.
Subcommittee, I'm sorry, correct. So if we already have a subcommittee that is selecting these people, why do we need another subcommittee? It feels kind of.
Organize a subcommittee going from five planning commissioners, and was it two? Two at large, and then now just going to just two council members, or whatever else we guys want to do.
So we're basically streamlining it, in my opinion.
Okay, I, I just understood that you wanted to form a subcommittee of council members to oversee homeless and housing.
Yeah, just be, just like we did T bids, just be two instead of seven.
So, so let me.
Or reduce the numbers, expand the numbers. Those decisions.
But you don't want a subcommittee of council members?
No, just like T bid, like we just did with T bid, just two council members is the subcommittee.
Do we still want to have the Housing and Homelessness Committee? So is there a situation where the council's contemplating just eliminating, dismissing, thanking and dismissing the seven members from the Housing and Homeless Committee, shutting that committee down? And then in its place, just having the council subcommittee of two council members?
I think that that would, I think that would be a, a good idea, because it would help to streamline the process.
That answer your question?
As a city manager, I'm not advocating for anything. This is purely council.
That, that answers my question.
So those are the three, expand the numbers, reduce the numbers, remove the planning commission from the committee, create a council, like we did with the D bid?
No, I understood. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding where we were previously speaking about the reorganization a couple of meetings back and appointing new members, but I understand now. Thank you.
Good. Counsel, okay, public, Cindy Bernard?
Hi, I did plan to speak on this one. And I wanted to speak to a little bit my experience, having served on a city committee, um, with, uh, Mayor Bildurin and Mayor Proton Minz, which was these, tell me if I'm wrong, because I've been trying, racking my brain on this one. I think it was the seven-member STR Advisory Committee, which had, I think, on it, again, I can't, I've been racking my brain. It was two, two, and three? I, I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember, I can't remember who the other planning commissioner was.
It was two planning commissioners, two, um, two city councilmen, and then we had, uh, three, uh, from the public.
Three, three public members?
Yes.
And, and to me, I, I'm not sure if we need that many, you know, city officials on it. But to me, that was a very valuable experience, and it was a great opportunity for community engagement in an issue that was, uh, looming very large in our community, which we managed to sort of, at least for a little while, and tamp down. And, um, I would really encourage you to consider a committee that's a little bit more autonomous than it's been. I think that to have a two, um, civilian, five city official committee was never functional. It was always a subset of the planning commission. It didn't have the ability to meet outside of the planning commission. And you had to have the whole planning commission there to do anything. So I, I would, no, don't, please don't do that. But, but I think that some combination of maybe a planning commissioner and a council member, it doesn't need to be two council members, you know, have a planning commission, a council member, and three, um, I, you know, residents. Or four residents and a, you know, I mean, there's other combinations to consider here, but I would really encourage you to allow a larger engagement from the residents on the committee than just the two, because it's really a valuable experience. And when you limit it that way, you really limit the ability of people to be engaged in this issue in that kind of direct and important way. Thanks.
Eric Mendez?
Hey there. Uh, yeah, this is a great, a very important topic. And, you know, I, I think here I'd like to please ask to be heard as a professional with 30, you know, a lot of experience in this. You know, um, I think this is an opportunity to give us an option, maybe even save resources. I think we should just have, you know, the regional steering committee is, is, they're doing great work. Uh, I only piqued my interest to go to those when I attended the planning commission meeting, the one where, um, you know, Lakita Bolingheart said, if you want to crucify me for something, crucify me for trying. What really got under my skin and got me interested to go to the RSC was the fact that that grant proposal, or whatever her proposal was, had a lot of things that, you know, definitely got everyone upset, you know, because I think it was just she didn't have experience. I, I can't speak for her, but, you know, people were saying, hey, you can't ship that. I think it could have been worded better if there would have been a member of city staff or, or a city guidance, to say, hey, maybe you might want to reconsider that. And then I know when it came in the second time around, it was wonderful, you know. Uh, I, I think, uh, you know, there's a lot of, you know, putting these two agencies against each other, like with Arch, you know, and there's some changes with Arch, because Astrid had come to me and asked if I would reactivate my nursing license, which I was on track to do before I had my illness in January. You know, I went over to the firehouse, which I didn't know, I heard about this being a waystation, but I thought it just never happened, but it did. It's on a one-year, $1 a year lease for five years for the county, and they just renewed. But if you go over there, look inside their offices, it's just full of crap, uh, excuse me, but like, it's full of just donated supplies just sitting in the apparatus space. And it's just like, I'm like, well, why don't you guys clean this out and distribute it, or have a fundraiser here? Well, no, because supervisor, supervisor, whatever, does it, what it meant, that there's a homelessness problem. You know, and no one in the neighborhood wants. Well, no, because supervisor, supervisor route, everyone does it, what it would meant that there's a homelessness problem, you know, and no one in the neighborhood wants it. I'm like, we're using a firehouse, which by county code is supposed to be for public health and safety. I, I, I'm very concerned about that. So anyways, I went to the steering committees and I noticed, why is none of the eight people on that board? There's, there wasn't one person from the healthcare district, there was no one with a clinical or social work background. So I'm like, as you know, I'm on the Morongo Basin Healthcare District Board as a community health board representative. I do not speak for that board, I'm just giving you a personal, professional opinion. I, I talked to the CEO of the healthcare district and the next week, we now have Janine Duff sitting on that. And today's meeting was great because Kimberly Mejia, who's the interim CNO of High Desert Medical Center, which is the less E of our, our medical center, she came. And I've been working with her on some personal issues I had regarding my incident in January. And she's great, they're actually looking at doing more, they have money to give. And I'm meeting with the CEO of Desert Care Network on Friday to discuss a few things about this as well. And I'm also working on a grant proposal with the grant writer in Palm Springs on something I'm working on. So I, I think, you know, I, I think maybe the city manager might be well, well suited. You should consider maybe, does he even need to be there? I mean, you've got a nurse representing the town and she asks excellent questions and I, I have complete faith in April. And I think we should look at the way we're using this resource, thank you.
All right, back up here for consideration, motion?
I think that, you know, one of the things that Cindy Bernard said was, there was some truth in that. And that seven-person committee, I feel like would be more with planning commissioners. I feel like that did make it a little bit more difficult to make recommendations to the council. But I'm not, you know, I don't, I, I don't really care one way or another. I think we need to reorganize it. If we do a council subcommittee though, I'd like to be on that subcommittee. If that's not, if that's not the will of the council, then, you know, I think that, you know, we can look at maybe reducing the number of committee members to five and maybe having each council member make a recommendation. There's a lot of different ways that we can do this, I'm not set in stone.
If, if we are gonna have a subcommittee, I would ask that, since I am the representative for the Office of Homeless Services, San Bernardino County East Valley Regional Steering Committee, that I also be part of that subcommittee.
Anything?
Well, if we keep it to the council at, at the beginning of this, and if they have the recommendation later on to us that they think they should expand it or they, they just feel that they can handle the, the, the issues for it.
Yeah, if a situation comes up, they can add more.
So then, or if they just feel like, no, this is more streamlined, then we just leave it at the two. So I'm okay with just, just starting out with just the subcommittee of the council.
So you wanna make a motion and adding them two on there?
I will make that motion.
I think we're all volunteering each other.
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright absent, Mayor Protem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Bildurain?
Aye.
Approve 401 to have councilmember Scott and councilwoman Ramirez as the subcommittee.
All right, future council initiated items. None, we can remove, we can remove three, so.
I do have one. I'd like to make a future initiated item request to, for the city to discuss a recognized neighborhood program.
Thank you, sir. So when you, could you expand on what neighborhood program means and what, in what context?
So, you know, multiple cities already do this. They, they basically establish, they basically recognize neighborhoods so that they can actually organize it. I'm, I don't, can't talk, I can't say too much.
So would it be, so for example, Palm Springs quite effectively has created different neighborhoods where it's the Movie Colony Neighborhood or it's, you know, different, different neighborhoods have different communities. One could be up here Chocolate Drop, another, I don't know if they'd wanna be known as Hanson Track, Ben Hunter Track. And so I know that street signed hoppers and that, well, really they're two different things, but sometimes they go hand in hand candidly. So are you talking about that or are you talking about something different?
I mean, that's, that's one example of a recognized neighborhood program, but that's not the only recognized neighborhood program. There's a lot of different, that's why it's a discussion, so we can kind of figure out what that looks like for our city. You know, because we don't wanna just go completely off of what one city is doing.
Okay, so then I believe on these future council initiated items, if this is something that the council collectively would like to hear more about, I believe that motion per se would need a, a second.
So you just wanna put it on the thing and then we'll figure out discussion, okay, yeah, I'll second.
Recognized neighborhood program.
Now, does, does, does neighborhood program mean like a youth basketball program? Or is it, could you provide a little bit of, of course, you know?
I'll, I'll be, I'll be candid, Mr. City Manager, I feel like we're, we're moving, we're talking too much about this discussion item. It's not on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
And then we put it as a initial, future initiative items and then we'll get down to the brass and tacks of everything and then.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I second.
We can remove three now, right? All right. And public comments. This is a time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courtesy decorum during their comments. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out a name and address slip and give it to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action discussing items not included in the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of the item on the agenda. Eric Mendez?
Hey there. So I have a handout today, you know, I brought it to the Hobo Services Committee regarding conflicts of interest, kind of along the subject of accountability and transparency. I'll start with me. You know, when I took that seat on the healthcare district board, I kind of warned them before. It's like, I, I would love to, but you know, what I'm trying to do with my initiative with the JTGCA, if you look at my, I think it's item three, Community Health and Wellness, I need to go to the district and the foundation to kind of ask for funding. You know, I, I have, I, I foresaw that, you know, acknowledge that. And that's the same reason why I never applied to be on the tourism board, because I clearly knew that, you know, like this, I couldn't do a regional approach, then it would be a conflict or whatever. You know, but I happened to see on Dr. James' profile on the city manager webpage, there was a link to ICMA or IMCA, International Management of City and County Association or yada, yada. They had some great, great ethical and, and ethical and conflict of interest stuff on there. And I actually chatted with a few people there and they've got, actually, I meant, I was looking in my little purse there, I was trying to find the tenants. There's like eight or nine tenants talking about professional ethics and what's, you know, conflict and so forth. I, I didn't bring my notes or whatever, but I have my, my agreement with the healthcare district here. You know, when I was paroled the other day, that morning, that's when Lynn Evans gave me a call. We had about a twenty minute discussion and, you know, I posted something on LinkedIn that kind of questioned the care after my experience, you know. Again, I don't wanna talk about my medical records, but I had a neurological event in January. They worried, what I had, what we call transient ischemic attack. I was altered after having the flu really bad. We had our, our national survey, the HRSA survey for the district. And I guess they had all been out and really sick, the flu B was virulent, and then I caught it. And I was sick for like two weeks with like a hundred and two degree fever. Then when I went down there after being told up here that I'd had a heart attack with EKG changes at a troponin of five, I was a little concerned. I just went down there and, and there was some interesting stuff that happened to me in desert regional. And because my truck was on recall for a month at the dealer, I was pretty much being discharged to the street with no one to pick me up and no cellphone because I lost my glasses, so it was quite a ride. So I kind of got to experience what it was like to be on the streets and kind of walking it. And what really scares me is as someone who is a healthcare professional in my life, I couldn't articulate things and, and it was, it was scary. And, you know, when I went to try to get the rental car, after being seen in the hospital and determined I was okay, it was, I was out of window for treatment. Then I, someone said, well, you're having a stroke, you should call 911. And they called an EMS response to the airport where I'm working with them on something. So that was quite interesting to be kind of, I actually, it was funny because they, they dispatched their behavioral unit. And the guy got there, he recognized it right away. It's actually, his name's Josh, I believe, he works at the Palm Springs Police Department. I guess they just started that program a, a few weeks before. But he recognized right away, hey, maybe this is something, you just need to calm him down or whatever. So I commend them for that, so that's all I'm gonna say. But I think we need to just make sure we're being ethical and avoiding any conflict, thank you.
All right, thank you. Cindy Bernard? For someone that wasn't gonna talk tonight.
I, I know, I really wasn't gonna talk. I just wanted to follow up on Octavius' suggestion since, since I am on the executive committee of one of the organized neighborhoods in town, which is Indian Cove Neighbors, and really speak to how important it is in a town that is as large as this one is and as sparsely populated as this one is to organize your neighborhoods so that you can get things done. And, you know, for instance, Indian Cove Neighbors was an outgrowth of Twenty-Nine Palms Neighbors. And what Indian Cove Neighbors achieved was during redistricting, the, the reunification of Indian Cove, which had been divided in half when the council districts were organized. So we worked really hard, we publicized our plight and we got our neighborhood into one council district, which I think was a great achievement. And that's the sort of thing that negative, I mean, neighborhoods can achieve. We also, you know, are kind of a stepchild of the city in a way. We don't have a park, we don't have a community center, we're way on the other side of town, kids can't ride their bike to Not Sky Park. And we started to organize in order to take the land that we have in our neighborhood, that city land that's dedicated for a park, to someday make a park. It's kind of fallen apart because of some of the other pressure we're under that's going to come to the fore tomorrow night. But, you know, these are the sorts of things that as neighborhoods we can do and it's been a really great experience. And I would encourage council to really think about how the neighborhoods can organize and support each other. Thanks.
Thank you. City managers update?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. For anyone who needs it, there's coffee in the back. So, so Historic Plaza, I will make this brief, but there's still some good information here. So Historic Plaza, I also attended that, what a great event. Their creativity, they did such a great job with, with creating a wonderful welcoming environment. I also rode the bull, I'm still mildly nauseous because it spun around so long and so quickly. I was really impressed with not only the quality of the barbecue, in which I ate too much, but also the affordability. They, it really, they really priced it very reasonably well. And that said a lot about them. And just with the fun and the creativity that they had, the line dancing, that was a great event. And so just so grateful that we've got the people within that Historic Plaza doing what they do and the people who have also volunteered. Also wanted to provide a little update on our five-year strategic plan. We were able to get late last night, about nine o'clock last night, we got a copy of the draft strategic plan back. And so this morning I was able to hand out a copy of that to our city staff. And we are gonna have about a week to turn around comments on the city staff, on that strategic plan draft. We're gonna get that back to the consultant. And ultimately, the goal is that draft strategic plan is going to be heard in front of the city council as a draft on July 22nd. So that will be an opportunity for the community to take a look at how that plan is coming together and how it's breaking out on one, two to three, three to five-year goals. And so pretty excited about that. I think that's gonna be just a fantastic step forward. Then ultimately, the goal, once we get the comments back from the community and get the comments back from the city council during that July 22nd meeting, we're gonna ultimately roll those comments back into the plan and then ultimately bring the finalized strategic plan back to the city council on August 26th. And then as a city staff, if it is approved that night, we will look forward to beginning to implement that plan the very next day. And so that plan, if you've read the book Good, Great, it's an excellent, excellent book on life and in business. But one of the things they really talk about is building momentum on the flywheel. And as I was explaining to the staff this morning, this is our opportunity as a community, staff, as council, to build momentum on a flywheel. Now that we are really clarifying what is our north star? Who are we, who do we wanna become, how we're gonna get there? So we're actually really excited about it. And so that is all that I have for this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, counsel, last comments?
Any updates on that workshop, Mr. City Manager, for the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition?
Oh, yes, thank you ver, yes, thank you very much. So actually I have two, two updates in that regard. So just this week, we were able to identify July 12th, beginning at 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So July 12th, 10:00 AM to 1:00, uh, 1:00 PM. And that is gonna be held at the LPAC. So that is gonna be the Lucky Park Activity Center. That's gonna be over, located on Joe Davis Drive. I know if Carrie Ministry is here, she'd know what the address is. Seven, four, three, two, five, Joe Davis Drive, thank you, Ms. Cindy. So the CVHC, Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, is going to hold a, I don't know if it's so much as a workshop, it's more of maybe a qualification clinic for individuals who can come and provide their financial data to the CVHC to identify if they would qualify for a CVHC home. So again, for the people who kind of recall CVHC, but they don't quite remember what it is, CVHC is the Coachella, Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, and they have a program, it's a self-build program. So they provide all the materials and the people who are qualified will have to provide 1,500 hours towards the, the construction of a home. Now, this home is gonna have, it's gonna have a mortgage that is gonna be priced to the person's ability to what they can afford, assuming they qualify. So there's a number of criteria. So on July 12th, CVHC is gonna communicate that criteria. And then for people who believe they qualify, they can then submit an application. I wanna say the credit check is gonna be $60. And so if they, if the people think they can qualify for it, then they'll submit the credit information. CVHC will take it that day and they'll probably, it'll probably take some time. I don't know if it's a couple of days, a couple of weeks, don't know. And then they'll identify, does anyone from this community qualify for that program? So that is gonna be on July 12th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM over at the Lucky Park Activity Center. The second announcement, appreciate you, you bringing this up, councilmember Scott, is we just booked a, a discussion with Senator Ochoa Bo. And that is gonna be on August 21st. It's gonna start at 6:30 PM and go until 8:30 PM. And I wanna say that is gonna be an open house. So, and that is gonna be located over at Freedom Plaza in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. July 12th is like right around the corner, that's not a lot of time for outreach.
Correct, it is, it is, I wanna say, two, two weeks away. So, yeah, so if our media partners can get that out, I know that CVHC is gonna be getting that out. Those were one of the dates, that was the furthest date out that they had provided. And so I thought this weekend would be too close, there would be virtually no time to advertise it. But on the July 12th, it would give us time to advertise.
Pretty good? All right. Before we adjourn, don't forget Fourth of July celebration at Not Sky Park. Music, water slides, face painting, vendors, family activities, fireworks viewing from the casino, yes. Sponsored by the city and the Boladian Family Fund Center, hope to see everyone there. Also, there will be no July 8th council meeting, coming back from the Fourth of July weekend. So the next meeting will be July 22nd. Have a happy Fourth of July, be adjourned. Well, no, well, because the workshop didn't help.